I can hit record.
I am ready, go ahead.
This meeting is being recorded.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Tyler Bird. Tyler Bird.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Listen.
Ben Ellenboss.
Here.
Carol Frazee.
Here.
Kathy Kirschner.
Here.
Thank you, all council members are present. Uh, we'll now go to, uh, since we moved the executives' report from, uh, finance to our evening session, we will go ahead and have the executives' report. Executives to do?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, council. Uh, I don't have a report prepared for this coming meeting. I'll have one for the next meeting, thank you very much.
Okay, well, that was fast. Um, next is, we have ten, uh, sets of minutes to approve. Do I have a motion?
Do you approve?
Second.
Donovan moves, Bird seconds. Any discussion, changes, deletions, additions to the minutes, corrections? Seeing none, uh, please call a roll on the vote.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Rudd Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Hey, that passes unanimously. Uh, next, we have some public hearings. Uh, our public hearings tonight are being held virtually via Zoom webinar. Uh, for information on how to join the meeting, uh, visit www.watcomcounty.us/joinvirtualcouncil. Um, I think we're gonna show a quick video that explains this in more detail. So at this time, would everyone please stop sharing your video? And we will, we will have a video on, uh, how to, the public can join the meeting.
How to join the meeting to speak, please visit watcomcounty.us/joinvirtualcouncil. Meeting information, including Zoom meeting link, phone number, webinar or meeting ID, and password are available under the meeting date at the bottom of the page. Members of the public may join the meeting online or by phone. The meeting is broadcast live and recorded. All speakers will have three minutes. When you've joined the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to request to speak. To virtually raise your hand online, click the hand icon at the lower area of your screen. To virtually raise your hand by phone, dial star nine on your keypad. Council staff will call on you by the name listed, or if you're joining by phone, by the last three digits of the phone number from which you're calling. When called upon to speak, click the microphone icon to unmute, or if joining by phone, wait till you hear a message indicating the host unmuted your phone. Please first state your full name for the record. Staff will announce when your three-minute speaking time is up. Camera sharing will not be offered at this meeting. Thank you for joining the meeting.
Okay, thank you Kathy for, for playing that informational video. Uh, we'll now go into our first public hearing, which is AB 2020-253, a resolution authorizing Watcom County to enter into a 20-year communication tower lease agreement with Verizon Wireless for an existing tower site located at the Lookout Mountain Forest Reserve. Uh, do we have a staff report before we open it up to the public?
Good, good evening, council members. Um, I just wanted to kind of brief you, we have a couple these this evening. This first one, uh, with Verizon Wireless, this is an existing tower of which Verizon uses. Uh, this is essentially an extension of their current lease agreement that's been updated. Um, prior to that, we, and we acquired the lands from the Department of Natural Resources. We had the format, the lease format that the state was using. Uh, we've updated that with our legal staff and added, uh, various, uh, items that the county requires for the agreement. This one also has a delay in its start. Uh, the reason, this is fairly typical with, uh, commercial vendors in that they have to market space on these towers. Um, in discussions, our previous leases were 15-year leases. Uh, the companies had asked for 30-year leases. Our legal staff, and in looking at what we had, we felt comfortable with 20 years. And as such, that's the, uh, lease agreement before you this evening.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Um, any questions for staff, Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, thanks, um, so Mike, the amount is something like 25,000 a year, so a couple thousand a month. Um, how do I put that in perspective in terms of like, was there some bid process to get? Um, that, is this continuing with the previous level was? Um, I, I, and does Verizon have like an opportunity, if we didn't do this, to go somewhere else? I mean, what sort of? I think what sort of leverage does the county have to, to maybe get, um, the maximum potential revenue out of this? It seems like a pretty good deal for them, and for us, but, um, how do we get that number?
Uh, that, that number is based on the lease rent schedule that the state puts out. Uh, the Department of Natural Resources has that published on an annual basis, and that's based upon the appraised value of the sites. There's a number of things that go into that, uh, particular value. Um, location being the primary one, and the potential for coverage on these towers. Uh, these are not, uh, in as good of a location as those that are on the west side of Lookout Mountain. These are on the southern end, uh, but they do play an important role in shooting down the I-5 corridor. Um, so that lease rent schedule has a number of variables in it, depending upon whether there's utilities, the road, um, and, uh, that coverage. Um, in this particular instance, the tower's owned already erected and owned by Verizon Wireless. Um, so it's not a new tower going up. They, their powerhouse and all the utilities, as well as the electrical to the site, uh, is already factored into that, and is something that the vendor pays. Um, it's structured such as are, uh, both the state leases, as well as some of the others in that. Um, there's a, basically, a base rate for the footprint that the tower sits on. There is consideration if that needs to be expanded. Um, and then there's an additional cost for the various private vendors that are on top of that particular tower. Uh, we cost share in whatever formula they negotiate and work out with, um, those particular vendors that are there. And then there's a separate road maintenance fee that, uh, the tower owner pays, as well as any of the other vendors that are on top of those towers. So it's a little complicated, but those are all factored into the pricing for the tower itself.
So the, the, it's safe to say the county is sort of obligated by what that lease rent schedule puts the value at?
It is to a degree. Uh, there are, there are some other, um, additional, uh, costs and bonuses that the tower companies pay. Um, and the other thing, keep in mind that those vendors that are on top of those towers change. Um, those are reported to us, so it's not unusual on some of these to have, um, two or three different vendors change over the course of a single year. So it is an ongoing process. There is also an escalator in there, um, on an annual basis, um, to keep the, the lease current. Uh, this one was adjusted for when it begins. Um, as I mentioned, Verizon already has a lease, uh, agreement that's good, I believe, for the next three years on the same tower.
Any other questions before we open the hearing?
Uh, Mike?
Yeah, go ahead, Tyler.
Thanks, Barry. Um, so they put out this, the, the rent schedule, uh, what math problem, or essentially once a year, first to be able to factor what we're getting charged for that? How often does that actually change, like the algorithm change?
Uh, the state uses, um, they go through a process and they're, they evaluate the, uh, um, because of the number of sites that they have in the state. That was a question we had asked. Um, they look at the value in the market on that, and then that rent schedule is put out.
So I, I heard you say that earlier, I understand that part. What I'm actually trying to figure out in my head is, if we're basing it off of whatever that schedule is today, and we're giving it to them with whatever the incremental increases are for the next 30 years, is it, what's the likelihood that that schedule will change in five years or 10 years? And that the increases will go up past what we have and what we're, we're already charging? So how often does it actually change? How often do they change the algorithm that they're using to determine that?
Uh, that, that is, is a state question. I don't know how often they change that algorithm. And looking at, uh, the annual lease agreements, uh, since we acquired those, they have been fairly standard. They've increased. Um, supposedly, that's based on, on market value of those sites. You will also note that we also have in the, uh, lease agreement, the ability for the county to renegotiate those costs. So that, that's a requirement that, uh, we have as a county, uh, that the state puts on us. So we do have that ability that if we get down the line here five years and decide that, in fact, uh, those numbers don't look, um, right, or that, in fact, uh, let's say appraised prices have increased considerably, uh, we do have that option in the lease agreement to renegotiate.
Okay, uh, one other question. The, we have a longstanding issue with radio access, uh, for like emergency radio response, right? Or being, and for our emergency responders to be able to access the radio frequency network in certain spots within the county that are dead right now. Do we have the ability with this contract to leverage their tower for our own kind of radio equipment so that we could extend our radio network for our emergency responders without having to rebuild the, the entire tower and everything else? So similar in context to what we saw with Xfinity when they gave us a free public network channel, right? In their contract?
Uh, in this particular instance, this is the commercial tower, and I believe there is not space available. If there was, we certainly could negotiate with them as we could with other vendors. Um, you will note, uh, Mr. Bird, we have another item right after this on our agenda, and that particular one is for public safety, um, and, and a combined effort between Skagit, uh, 911 and Watcom County. This, this one is, is solely a commercial tower, um, for Verizon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, we will open the public here. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I just want to follow Mr. Bird's question, that was an excellent question. Um, Mr. McFarland, are the towers close to each other?
Ye- yes, they are.
Okay, so the public channel tower would, you said would have the capacity, and the fact that they're close to each other, having radios on both towers would be irrelevant anyway, correct?
In, in addressing that, there, there are three towers on this, or will, would be three towers on the site. Um, the, the second request this evening is to erect a new tower. Um, however, there were three towers in this area. Um, as far as the, uh, technical information in terms of what goes up there and interference and that, that is all worked out and, and, uh, um, in the lease agreement itself and between the tower companies. Um, this should not interfere based upon, uh, the information that, uh, I've received, uh, from Skagit um, and others in terms of interfering with anything that we would put up there. However, that, that, that's a technical question that needs to be worked out, depending upon what goes up there, um, by which company.
Because Emergency Operations Center has just hired on a guy to put in the radio network. Um, I think where I'm, where I'm gonna come down on this is I want to wait until we hear from him. But anyway, with that, I'll shut up for the hearing.
Yes, and, and, and there's a, an issue there in terms of, um, Watcom County did not know, um, and, and we're kind of getting off a little bit because this isn't, this isn't the tower I think you're asking a lot of those questions on. But, um, Skagit, uh, their, their technician at that had, um, closely looked at the site and had basically been the project lead, um, on, on the second tower. This is an existing one that, uh, there's nothing changing essentially on this except for an extended lease.
But I'm, I'm interested, Skagit's needs may have been addressed, but I'm interested in Watcom's needs.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Uh, Ms. Hockel, is there anyone, uh, wishing to testify?
Yeah, we have one attendee with a raised hand. Um, I'll go ahead and unmute Richard Pailolo. Um, but if you could please confirm, Richard, that it's your wish to speak on this Verizon Tower lease. Are you there, Richard?
Yes, I am here.
Are you calling in to, um, speak on the Verizon Wireless, uh, tower?
Well, to speak about the last meeting that I spoke at.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'll call on you during the open session then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, Councilmember Buchanan, I don't have any other hands raised for this hearing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, seeing no one else wishing to testify, I will close the public hearing, turn it back to council. Let's wish to the council.
I'd like to move that we hold this and the next item until we've heard from representatives of our own Emergency Operations Center Radio Department.
Uh, I'll second that for point of discussion, and then I have a question.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion.
Uh, Mike, what, is there any reason we couldn't hold this for a little while?
Um, I, I do have concerns with the second one because, um, there is some urgency in getting that particular tower up. It serves, uh, not only, uh, the Watcom Sheriff's Department or Will, as well as, um, our emergency, uh, services and Skagit 911. Um, that tower is needed for a section of Watcom County and, uh, northern Skagit, um, that does not have good reception. Um, the challenge on that, uh, that, that the second one, which, um, in the motion there that's referenced, is that because of the watershed window, uh, and what's required to get these towers up on top of the mountain before winter, uh, there is some urgency because of the permitting and everything else. Um, so it's gonna be a quick construction season. The Verizon Tower, um, that particular lease agreement, the first one here, is already existing and operating under a current lease and will continue to do so, I believe, for about another year and a half.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion on Mr. Brown's motion?
Could, could we help here from, uh, from Sheriff Alfo?
Yes, Sheriff Alfo, please.
If I could figure out what buttons to push. Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, state the sense of, uh, urgency on the part of Skagit County to get that radio system. It's vital to their communications. They've asked us to do what we can. I know it's been delayed because of COVID. And, uh, it, the planning process, it's gonna play a, uh, probably a role in improving our radio communications for public safety purposes here in Watcom County. So just that one comment.
So, if I may amend my motion, I will, I will amend it to just hold the first one. It sounds like that's a renewal.
Let's deal with the first agenda item, and then we'll, we'll move to that one when we get there. So, um, do you want to just withdraw your motion and restate it for the next one?
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, Ms. Kirschner, did you have a, a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I don't think we can act on both motions together because the public hearing is required. So, um,
Yeah, that's correct.
It sounds like that's resolved.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so we, uh, we don't, now we're sitting without a motion.
I move to hold the first one until we hear from, uh, Emergency Operations Center Radio, uh, a new Emergency Operations Center Radio person.
Second.
Um, I, I don't know if that's what you really meant to do, but I, I thought, I heard Mike say that the first one was the one that had no urgency and it was a commercial tower.
That's right, and that's why I want to hold it.
Okay.
Because there is no urgency, so let's hold it until we hear from some, from our people.
Okay. Do we have a second? Is that a two you're giving me, Kathy?
I seconded it.
Okay, Ms. Kirschner.
Um, so I'm not sure why we would hold it. Um, Rudd, can you kind of explain your thinking around why you want to hold it to hear from our emergency people? If it's a commercial tower?
Well, the, the second one is the construction of the emergency radio tower. So I'm assuming our emergency services have been involved with that, and Sheriff Alfo confirmed the, the urgency from his perspective. So that tells me our emergency responders have been involved in that decision, so I'm happy to vote on that one. And on the first one, on the, on the first one, which has a renewal coming up in a year and a half, we may have things we want from an emergency services perspective to be incorporated in that such as space. Because my concern is I don't know how these towers interrelate with each other, and whether, whether one of them creates a radio shadow for another one, and that's what I want to find out.
Mr. McFarlane?
Yeah, I, I, I can, um, answer that question. Um, first of all, in terms of the towers relating to each other, it doesn't. Um, they should be, uh, fine with what's going up there and what's proposed. Um, this one is already existing, so the arrays and everything that are up there on that tower, um, uh, cannot interfere with anything new coming up and vice versa. So I, I don't think, um, that interference, uh, i- i- is an issue in these towers here. I'd be glad to review it, or they would have to look at what's, uh, Verizon has up there commercially and see what, if any, impact that would have, um, at any given time. So, um, it's kind of a, it is a technical question, but those three towers in the past have coexisted. The only difference is, this, this one here is, is Verizon's tower and, you know, their equipment up there. If we were looking at wanting to put something on that tower, we would have to negotiate, uh, with, with Verizon directly on that.
And if we do, this is the time to negotiate.
The discussion on the motion?
Tyler.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, I am for holding it, Kathy, because I, I actually, looking at what the cost of expanding our emergency radio network would be, and how we've already allocated some of the funding for, um, the Economic Development Fund in the past to be able to run fiber and towers out in Mount Baker. It, it seems like these facilities might be an optimal situation for us to be able to go in and have an existing tower. We don't have to build, have battery backups we don't have to build, or that we'd have access to, uh, redundant power systems, as well as fiber already connected to them, where we could just really got to throw up our own radio wave and then connect it to the system, right? So if, if we could do that and use this as kind of a model for future tower contracts so that we could just extend our, our network that way and, and patch holes or black spots, it could actually be super cost-effective for us.
Any other discussion on the motion to hold? Ms. Frazee?
Just wanted to ask, um, Mr. McFarland, if that, if that's even a possibility with the towers?
The, the Verizon Tower is a private tower. Um, they own the, they own the tower, they own the infrastructure up there. What we're doing is leasing them the footprint, um, for that tower. So we have no ownership in, in the tower infrastructure up there, um, at the site. Um, whether or not, I mean, these towers sit right next to each other. Um, the, uh, second thing we have on the, uh, hearing this evening, um, is, is a tower that has space on it once it gets erected and already has a reduced rate consideration in there for both the county as well as Skagit because of publics, the public service need. Um, I'm a little confused in terms of this particular tower, how that would relate to that. Um, if we're looking at asking Verizon to provide some services in lieu of waiving fees on the, for their lease fees on the tower, or their cost sharing with the other vendors up there, that, that's an entirely different type of a lease agreement.
Executives to do?
Yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, I, uh, I agree with the Mr. Bird's proposal that if, uh, Mr. McFarland, what we are looking for is, if we can find a spot on the same tower and put our own array on it, which is directed towards the Kendall or towards that areas we are looking at it, and that could be a repeater, uh, for whatever little knowledge I have, that if we, we are not asking, they can do their private thing, it's just the superstructure they have up high, and we can go put one of our dish on it, as, as a part of this lease negotiations, and we connect our fiber, and then we get, uh, repeaters in the low-lying areas in the eastern county. It may be workable, I don't know, but that is a question we should ask Verizon. Because to me, these private companies, the Comcast and Verizon and AT&amp;T, they take all the plums, means they work with the cities, and they take these contracts, and nobody want to serve the rural areas. But this is one of the ways that we can ask for some concession to provide some services in our rural areas. And the part is, technology has come long ways in the last 20 years. And it is really worth exploring. Uh, we are spending a million dollars, so we just decided earlier in the day to give access to, uh, school kids. If something like this can work for next 20 years, then it is, eh, eh, best for our community. So I don't know it's possible, but I think the train of thought is very good, and I support that, and I think we should have that discussion.
Any further discussion, Mr.?
Yeah, this is a matter of policy. I think we, we now have hired a radio specialist as part of the EOC. And I, I think any of these discussions, we should, we should utilize his expertise and, and his, uh, intent to do an integrated approach with communications in the community. So that's all I'm asking for is, I just want him in the discussion.
Anything else on the motion?
Councilmember Buchanan, Councilmember Ellenboss has a raised hand.
Okay, yes, go ahead, Councilmember Ellenboss.
Um, my concerns have been spoken to.
Okay. So seeing no more discussion, please call a roll.
Carol Frazee?
This is a motion to hold, by the way.
Hold, yes, yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Rudd Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yeah.
That passes unanimously. Next item is AB 2020-254. Tony, Barry?
Barry, you got muted.
Sorry, I was looking at my paper and not at my screen. Um, the next item is AB 2020-254. And before we, I repeat this into the record, I just want to, I think there might be a typo in it, uh, because it says after agreement with PI Tower Development LLC, it says for existing tower. Didn't you say this was a new tower?
This, this is a new tower. What, what, is that in the resolution?
Well, it's in, it's just in, it's just in the agenda item, I don't know. It just says existing.
It says existing tower site, so the site is existing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just, I just muted. Oh, yeah, yeah. I just, I just needed to go one more word. So thanks Kathy. Okay, so um, AB 2020 dash 254 is a resolution authorizing Watcom County to enter into a 20-year communication lease agreement with PI Tower Development LLC for an existing tower site located at the Lookout Mountain Forest Reserve. Um, I assume you've covered everything you wanted to cover, Mike, for staff report?
I did.
Mr. Donovan?
Uh, we get back to the question about how these are valued. So this is a new one. So the existing one that we were just talking about, which um, I mean, they're both kind of on the same area around Lookout, right? But this is $7,000 annually, so like less than $600 a month. To put a new one up, why is that valued so much less than the, and I think you said something about it, there's a public service here, but you know, the other one was $25,000 a year for renewing the existing one.
This, this tower is being put up primarily to serve Watcom County and Skagit County. And as such, we looked at the rates on there and for where it wanted to be directed, uh, it was very limited. Now, it could, uh, we did have potential in there to allow for commercial use of it. Um, however, um, this company would not put up a tower unless it had a primary um, user. In this particular instance, um, Skagit was ahead, they knew that, they needed the tower. Uh, it's my understanding, you can confirm with the sheriff on that. Um, but uh, it's my understanding the uh, sheriff's office also uses uh, this uh, Skagit County same equipment um, to go down there to provide coverage in northern part of Skagit and uh, the southern part of Watcom where this is needed.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand this lease rent.
Reduced rate on the base simply because th- th- this is a tower and, and these tower sites do not cover broadly over the entire county. That's the other part is that these are fairly specific in terms of how far they can cover and what can go up there.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand the, the lease schedule thing. I'm not challenging the rates or something, but it, but it, because it's more of a public function, then you would have a, a lower rate for it because this is primarily a public function. So we would have a, this, is it the same lease rent schedule we're talking about for the other one? And is it a lower rate because it is a public benefit essentially?
That is correct. What we were doing was trying to get a lower rate for putting the counties up there uh, for their public service on there. There, there is no, there is no tower and there was.
Did Mike just freeze?
Mike froze.
Looks like we need a communications tier.
Mike, you froze there right at the end.
Oh.
Uh, yeah, we didn't hear any of that.
Okay. So, so, so Skagit was able to find a tower company that was willing to um, put up a tower to provide that particular service. Um, there were another tower vendors in there. In fact, the previous tower was a commercial tower that was removed. That, that opened up space and the potential of putting the tower primarily to serve Skagit and Watcom.
Councilmember Bird.
Mike, um, are we cost sharing with this? Are, are, since we're going to be using it, are we paying for a cost, a portion of the, of the tower here?
Uh, the sheriff's department of public safety will have to negotiate for the um, uh, space up there, but it should be at a reduced rate. We tried to get that in there, but at the time, the sheriff's office didn't know what was going up there. And as a result of that, we, we could incorporate that into the agreement.
Okay, um. If we're having the tower put up for us in our use, are we able to add other solutions to it? So could we add high-speed internet with like beam technologies or point-to-point at some future point in time? Or would we incur additional costs with that as well?
Again, this is a lease of the land that the tower sits on. The questions you're asking uh, would be negotiated with the uh, tower owner uh, in terms of what was actually going up there. On the rent uh, schedule that the state has, there's different prices depending upon whether it's a cable tower or repeater station um, primary in that. So those are all getting into the arrays. Um, we've not gotten into that because we just leased the property that the tower sits on.
That's fine. I just, that's what I thought was the case. I just wanted to make sure that, that before. So eh, and this is right next to the other tower, the Verizon one that we're talking about, right?
Correct.
Okay. To me, I will move that we hold this one as well. And my reason for that is because if we can arrange something where we could use the Verizon tower and we don't have to build a brand-new tower that we're having to cover the, a portion of the cost for, it saves us the funding of having to develop an entire tower, which is nice. It will also be ideally faster in the concept that that tower already exists and hooking up additional arrays to it should be quicker than building something from the scrap, ground up and having to go through the entire permitting process. Um, so we should be able to get something up much more quickly than, than starting from scratch. And from an environmental standpoint, I look at it and I think that, you know, three towers right there, when you could consolidate down to one, I mean, the footprint on the environment and the land um, is an issue. The eyesore, I mean, is another issue and I don't know what, what kind of issues you run into with wildlife in general. So in my head, the fewer towers it would be going onto, the better.
I need to, I need to interrupt for a point of order, Tyler. I don't, I don't disagree with you, but uh, we have a public hearing before we start making motions, right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll hold that till later, but that'll be my reasoning for it when I can bring it up.
Okay, anything else for, before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
There are no raised hands wishing to speak for this hearing.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain Mr. Bird's motion.
I move.
Motion to hold, do we have a second?
Councilmember Buchanan, um, Councilmember Ellenboss has his hand raised.
Yes, Councilmember Ellenboss.
I was waiting till I got seconded. I was getting the line to speak. I'm not going to second it.
It hasn't been seconded.
Okay, if there's no second, that motion will expire and I would turn it back to council for further act.
Move approval.
Second, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve discussion. Mr. Donovan?
I appreciate Mr. Bird's ideas. Um, but I, I, I am hearing the sheriff say that this is time-sensitive whereas or is, is it time-sensitive for both Watcom County and Skagit County? It's primarily time-sensitive for, for Skagit County. But I, I understand the narrow window uh, to, to build up there.
It's particularly sensitive to the integrity of Skagit County's system. But we work so closely together. We have their communications equipment, our vehicles, we can communicate back and forth for backup. So it behooves us to get this done and accomplished and uh, we've been collaborating with the Skagit County Sheriff's Office and their radio folks down there and and there's an interest in, in uh, when we proceed with our own system to take advantage of all the infrastructure and I think we'll see cooperation. I know they've communicated with us as to the urgency of this uh, and uh, I would, I would urge if at all possible that uh, proceed with approval.
And then the second, um, this is for Mr. Sadeau, where in the budget? Like who actually funds the construction? Like where, what line and what budget does that come out of?
If, if I could address that, we, we do not have any costs in this project.
Sorry, that's what I.
Um, this is, the, the, these are, again, this is a private tower company. Uh, the site for all three towers is fully developed. Um, the space is made available on that uh, because of one of the towers being removed um, a couple of years ago. And, and I would point out, th- this is, these are pretty small sites. If you're to look at the entire site that the three towers sits, they sit on, it's less than an acre um, of, of property there. So these towers are located um, at a strategic location on uh, Lookout. And, and of course, a- as many of you know, there, there's a number of communication towers up there. We only own one of the sites.
Any more discussion on the motion to approve? Mr. Sadeau?
I just wanted to add that I served on the Northwest Regional Council. Actually, they are involved in this. It's, it's a weird thing. And uh, and there was a tower before on Mount Constitution, which was uh, 30, 40 years old and it was very old technology. And it was not, that's the problem that it was not reaching uh, north part of our county or southern part of our county and north part of Skagit County. And they had been planning for, I, if I remember correctly, uh, four or five years uh, to do this. And finally, they got into this position that nobody was wanting to do that tower for them because most of the large companies, the Horizons of the world, they are interested only in commercial type of ventures. Uh, so they finally got this thing going. And I think if we put any hold on it, or which is not even the question right now, it will necess, unnecessarily delay things. So this has been in works for a long time and they've finally found a solution.
Hey, further discussion? Ms. Kirchner.
Um, I have a question about the process. Uh, did, did this come through the finance committee? I, I don't recall it being discussed there. And if not, what triggers something to go through finance committee or come straight to the uh, evening agenda for a public hearing?
We ran out of time. Uh, didn't, didn't we have it on finance and then moved it to, to tonight?
Uh, no, not this. I don't think this.
Oh, that's, okay, I'm sorry. That's something else.
Maybe Dana could answer that question.
Dana Brown Davis, Clerk of the Council. This came to us with a request for a public hearing. So these types of uh, tower leases, we've only started to get these, I believe, Mike, is this correct? Just in the last year or so? And we've, they've always gone straight to public hearing.
If, if I could just clarify.
Frozen again.
Yeah, we lost him.
I think he's doing this deliberately just to prove his point.
Uh, with us in terms of how to best handle it and the public.
Can you start over, Mike? We lost you.
Okay. Okay. Our um, legal staff and, and myself sat down and talked about the process of putting these through. These are long leases. They're commercial leases and in, in the previous one, that it's, it's one that we already have a infrastructure on county property. Um, so it was, it suggested that the best way to go through would be not only do the public hearing on this, but also schedule it before the council.
Okay, I just asked because it, it seems like it's brought up a lot of questions that might have been answered in committee, so. Thank you.
Hey, any further discussion?
I got my hand raised, Barry.
Yeah, go ahead, Ben.
Hey, I just, I was just going to bring up the point that, you know, these are structures and they're, they are engineered and and I, I guess I'm kind of thinking that if there was room on them, that'd be one thing, but I'm, I'm guessing these companies aren't overbuilding these things and not have to fully utilize. So I mean, I appreciate the idea of seeing if we can get on there, but I kind of doubt it.
Mr. Bird?
Uh, it's my understanding that they actually routinely do this with their competitors. And so Verizon will build something and then resell space to, to Sprint so that Sprint can expand the network and Sprint then returns the favor and it's kind of expansion areas. So it's kind of a common practice to set up a tower and let other people jump on board and charge them for it. I'd be interested in asking you to see if that was a.
Right, but I'm saying that if, if they're going to be doing that and not giving stuff for our emergency operations.
Anything else before we vote? Okay, please call the roll.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yeah.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. I will now go into our open session. Um, if I could just have these, Kathy, run the video one more time for open session uh, for uh, instructions on how the public can get in to get public comment.
Welcome to the meeting. For instructions on how to join the meeting to speak, please visit watcomcounty.us/joinvirtualcouncil. Meeting information including Zoom meeting link, phone number, webinar or meeting ID and password are available under the meeting date at the bottom of the page. Members of the public may join the meeting online or by phone. The meeting is broadcast live and recorded. All speakers will have three minutes. When you've joined the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to request to speak. To virtually raise your hand online, click the hand icon at the lower area of your screen. To virtually raise your hand by phone, dial star nine on your keypad. Council staff will call on you by the name listed, or if you're joining by phone, by the last three digits of the phone number from which you're calling. When called upon to speak, click the microphone icon to unmute, or if joining by phone, wait till you hear a message indicating the host unmuted your phone. Please first state your full name for the record. Staff will announce when your three-minute speaking time is up. Camera sharing will not be offered at this meeting. Thank you for joining the meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, we shall now open the uh, public session. So uh, anyone wanting to speak, uh, raise your hand or uh, dial nine on your phone. Kathy, is there anyone wishing to speak?
Yes, we have Richard Pilillo.
Okay, Richard?
Yes, this is Richard Pilillo. I spoke uh, on July the 7th at the last meeting and uh, the end of the meeting, I spoke, I spoke, we got to allowing visitation at nursing homes. And at the end of the meeting, uh, there was about a quarter of an hour in which there were glimmers of hope for me to visit my wife. Uh, since then, I did send an email uh, to all of the council members. And I also um, phoned several of the council members with some further information. At the meeting uh, last week uh, Executive Sadeau said that uh, I was contacted by uh, Erica Lautenbach, which never happened. The only contact I had was when I just recently had a COVID test and uh, I did uh, receive uh, some instructions on what to do in case I didn't get contacted, which I didn't do for 10 days, but thank goodness, I am negative. So uh, anyway, but uh, thank you for your help at that meeting. I'm uh, calling up regarding follow-up because at the meeting of last week uh, or the last two weeks, I should say, there was glimmer of hopes that uh, there would be some action taken. Uh, the only glimmer of hope I had was reading the CNN report on July the 13th showing that CNN reporting more than half of the states opening up visitation for family members. And the reasons why, family stress, mental fatigue, uh, both on for the family members that are incarcerated at family homes as well as those at home wanting to see their loved ones. It's still very stressful and strain for me. And I really need to know where we stand, whether something's going to happen uh, in the county to take some action, to get things going. in the county to take some action, to get things going. Or are we gonna do nothing about it? I know you're important with doing major, millions of dollars with passing money for towers and things like that. I'm concerned as a thirty-eight-year taxpayer about my ability to see the right of the one I married sixty years ago. And I'm hoping that this will happen. I need to know where we stand, what action is taken. Are we going to... When is something gonna happen in our state? At today's meeting, people were knocking, almost knocking the glass out of their windows trying to visit their loved ones. And I sure want some results. Thank you.
Is there anyone else with a raised hand?
There's no one else with a raised hand at this time.
Okay, then seeing no one else, I will close the open public session and turn it back to council. Tyler, I talked to Dana over the break about the consent agenda. And since we didn't go over these items, we kind of just started digging into it. We'll go through them one by one instead of trying to do a consent action. So just do it like you would be doing, going through the committee, and we'll make motions and vote as if we were a large committee.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes?
My video has been stopped by the host. Needs to be unlocked.
You didn't get the memo? We shut off your email, too.
That's why it won't work.
Try your phone. It probably doesn't work either.
Ms. Kirchner had her hand up. Barry and Kathy has her hand up.
Okay, there we go. Kathy?
Thank you. Before we move into the consent agenda, can I just address Richard Pilillo's concerns? And, you know, it's been heartbreaking to hear him talk about his wife being in a assisted living facility and not being able to see her. And I'm wondering if, I guess I'm looking for the council's ideas about writing a letter to the governor's staff about this particular situation, and especially in light of what we heard this afternoon about how long this crisis potentially can last. Asking the state to look at our long-term care facilities, congregate care facilities, and coming up with a plan for loved ones to be able to visit. I think it's gonna be, well, it's extremely important. So I don't know, do I make a motion? Or is there a different kind of a request I can make at the council? Would you guys be in favor of me drafting up a letter and getting it sent off to the governor's office? I'll bring it forward maybe next week at our meeting to talk about the budget. Can I do that, Dana?
Yes, that would be the way to go, Kathy.
Okay, well, I will do that. If anybody has any input or wants to review it before I bring it to the council, let me know.
Thanks, Kathy. I think that's a great idea.
Sure. And thanks, Richard, for coming in and letting us know again about your wife.
Councilmember Brown? Okay, he's waving off. We will then proceed with our consent agenda, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Bird for his first item.
All right, the first item is AB 2020-211, request authorization for the county executive. Well, actually, these ones that are held, I could skip, right? We're just gonna go to the referred. So, okay.
No, actually, you can't skip them. What you have to do is report that the committee recommends holding it, and then the council will have to affirm that.
So if we vote to hold, that's different than a recommendation to hold, though.
But it's still a committee vote to hold. Dana, can you clarify?
That's correct. The recommendation to the council would be to hold. That's the committee's recommendation. And then there's a lot of times when a committee will just say, we voted to hold. And then if council members don't have an argument against that, then it just kind of goes through. But officially, it's much clearer for the record if you go through and make a motion at the council level to hold an item.
Yeah, that's the way. You would just say, the committee voted to hold and I still move. So.
Point of order. The committee's vote is a recommendation. It is not binding on the council as a whole.
Yeah, I think that's what we just said.
Yeah. Okay. Back to the first item. AB 2020-211, request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Waukesha County and Nooksec Valley School District to provide behavioral health services in the amount of $120,000. Pages 65 through 90 in your packet. That was held in committee with a 2-1 vote at that time. And I still move.
Okay, we have that motion. Discussion. Councilmember Donovan?
I don't think we have Ann Deacon on the list here, but I just want to make sure. This is, all of these, these are really amazingly important programs for counseling. And we were hoping that we'd have time because many of us have had the presentations about these programs, but not all of us. But I just, are we confident that we can wait until our August meeting to consider these? Was that the sense that we had earlier today?
Councilmember Donovan, the mistake, there was no hesitation or and nothing that was communicated at the time that would have any insinuated that there was any problem with holding it back. She seemed like it was not an issue whatsoever. And that, I would even go so far as my interpretation and the way I felt about what she was communicating was that she looked forward to it because it was an opportunity to give us a presentation on the program and what was happening as well. So.
Yeah, and I think that's my understanding, too. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, that was my understanding as well. Councilmember Frazee?
So my understanding, will she bring it forward on the August meeting? Just because these services are crucial for the students. And I think they are continuing to give the services, whether it be by telehealth. So I just think I really support all of these. I want to make sure that our students have them. So as long as she's going to bring it forward on the fourth or before the contract ends or whenever she needs it in, so to make sure we have a time to learn more about them and to make sure these students are taken care of.
Councilmember Frazee, as of now, the intention is to have it back in Finance at our next Finance Committee meeting so that we can have a presentation and have a thinkable of recommending to the council.
Councilmember Brown?
I'm gonna vote against holding these. We voted on supporting these programs, at least for the six years I've been on the council. I think they're excellent. I have the information. I need to vote in support of these tonight. But I respect others may feel differently, but that's my position.
Mr. Bird?
We have a motion on the table. But the, Councilmember Brown, I would respectfully ask that I appreciate that you feel that you have enough information, but that you understand that not all council members will feel the same way and that they have a right to hear that additional information and to have the understanding and ask the questions that they need to ask or that they would like to ask. And being that this causes no issues and nothing was communicated by staff, that would lead us to believe that this would at all cause any delays or problems with funding these contracts or approving them, there's absolutely no reason that we should not give a council member, regardless of who they are, the time needed to be able to learn more about the programs.
Councilmember Frazee?
There is a lot of information in the packet. And we always have the chance to reach out to Ann before a council meeting. And there's other items that come before us that we don't need a whole presentation before we vote on it. And this is, you know, we always say we want to look upstream and help people before they're incarcerated or help people before they have drug addiction. And these are direct services that do help children in the schools. So I would like, I feel like enough information's there. I don't know what is missing that would change my mind. And I don't know what information any of other council members need that's not in this packet, but I'd like to know if there is something missing.
I did see Councilmember Ellenboss. You have your hand up? Is that current or was that from last time?
That's from last time. I don't know if there's a way to clear it.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. Councilmembers, well, we'll hear from Executive Sado.
If the council, if the councilor member that we had a report from the court, Bruce, I believe, and Reynolds, Dave, that our juvenile population used to be 140 or something. And last time, it was like less than 10. And there was a detailed, detailed discussion. And I have been on the council for five years. I listen to every year. And this was the recent one. And we all listened to that, and they gave us the proof that how early investing, we're just investing a million dollars a year, just a million. You know why I'm saying just a million? Because we have to spend 20, 30, 40 millions once these kids grow up. And we all heard the full report and the success of this program from school counselors, from the court system, and from Health Department. So that was a year ago. How come we forgot about that?
Councilmember Bird?
Thank you. So if I could reiterate this one more time. We have new council members here as well. There is no harm here. What's happening is people are asking for additional time to learn more about the program. If anything, we should see that as an opportunity for our staff to talk about all of the great things that are happening in the program and why, so that our community understands why we're funding those programs. To push it through and vote on it when it causes no damage and to prevent another council member the opportunity to learn more and to understand what they're voting on, especially when it's their first time voting on this as a new council member. Not only does it cause frustration with council members, but it also causes questions by people in the community. I know that I would look at that situation and say, why is it so important when there is no time constraint and staff has said it's okay to hold it and they look forward to giving a presentation, to vote on it now and force it through in lieu of giving other people an opportunity to ask questions? What is it that they're trying to hide in that kind of situation? I'm not saying there's anything to hide here, but I'm saying from an optic standpoint, when you push something through that has the time available and you don't respect the other council members' needs to get more information, regardless of whether we understand why they feel that way, why they feel they need more information or not. It comes down to what are we doing here and are we going to be able to work together or not? So it's a simple ask. It has zero impact on whether this program happens or doesn't happen. But it is a good gesture to your other council members. And it's something I personally have done multiple times, even though I've disagreed with things being put on hold and not being voted on. If anyone has ever asked and said, I have more questions, I've always voted in favor of holding it to give that time and that transparency. It's a fundamental principle that our government is built on is transparency and openness of communication, not just amongst each other, but amongst everyone that's looking inwards from our community. It's a simple ask. I don't, I'm not even sure why it's gotten to this part of the conversation.
Councilmember Brown?
Or vote to hold.
Well, to Mr. Bird's point, I actually think this is an extension of a contract that's been in place for at least 10, 15 years, I think. So this should not, I mean, I respect that Mr. Ellenboss has not been on the council before, but Ms. Kirchner has been on the council before. And I believe this very program was something that we voted on and she would have voted on the last time she was on the council. So I'm not aware that it's structurally different.
Ms. Kirchner?
Thanks. Yes, this program actually started when I was on the council the first time. I am aware of this program. What I was interested in was asking some more detailed questions about how effective it has been. So how many, what's our dropout rate? So starting from 2013 to 2020, have we had a reduced dropout rate? Have we had fewer suicides as a result of this program? Have we had grade point averages increase? Have we had fewer interactions with law enforcement on a negative basis? I'm looking for that kind of information. But, and then the other issue I had was, I think that in this current climate we're in, where there are so many uncertainties about what school looks like, I wasn't willing to sign a three-year contract with our school district. We don't know in three years what school will look like for children. It could look completely different. And these dollars could be better spent supporting a different kind of a mental health program. So I'm not gonna vote against it tonight if you want to have the vote. And I still think that our Health Department will come and give a presentation and I can ask questions. But those were my thoughts about it. It's not an effort to hold it up. It was just an effort to kind of shine a little bit more light on it and think critically about the dollars that we're spending and make sure they're being spent in the most efficient way.
Mr. Brown?
So the exhibit provided in the packet says 97% improved or maintained their grades, 95% had similar or fewer absences, 97% had similar or fewer discipline problems, 99% had similar or fewer occurrences, and 98% had similar or fewer suspensions. And then.
Right. And Councilmember Brown, with all due respect, what that means is that we saw no change in 98% because it was similar or improved. I'm looking for data about graduation rates and suicide rates and some of the significant issues that our kids are facing with mental health issues and dropout rates.
Mr. Donovan?
I agree with pretty much what everybody's been saying here. But I think this is a great program. I will vote to support it. But I would actually look forward to hearing that presentation again that someone has heard. And I think we can do that in our August meeting and then move forward with it. That's just me.
And I agree with Mr. Donovan. I think it's not gonna hurt anything at all. Any other comments? Please call the roll. This is a motion to hold.
Red Brown?
Abstain.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
No.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
That passes five to one with Frazee opposed and Mr. Brown abstained. So next item, please.
Next item was AB 2020-220, request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Waukesha County and Linden School District to provide behavioral health services in the amount of $120,000. and Linden School District to provide behavioral health services in the amount of $111,000. It was pages 91 through 116 in your packet and that was also held in committee.
And you so move?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have a motion to hold on AB 2020 dash 220 discussion. Please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
For consistency, no.
Kathy Kirchner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
No.
That passes five to two with council members Brown and Frazee opposed.
The next item is AB 2020 dash 231, it's request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Wacom County and Blaine School District to provide behavioral health services in the amount of $131,400. Pages 117 through 142 in your packet. That was also held in committee with a two, one vote and I so move.
Discussion.
So we still have to do these one at a time, huh?
Yeah. So we're, we're, we're moving out now. Please call a roll.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
No.
Kathy Kirchner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
No.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes. Passes five to two with Brown and Frazee opposed.
Next item is AB 2020 dash 235, request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Wacom County and Meridian School District to provide behavioral health services in the amount of 108,000, pages 143 through 166 in your packet. That was held in committee with a two, one vote and I so move.
It's been moved to hold, discussion. See none, let's vote.
Todd Donovan.
Aye.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
No.
Kathy Kirchner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
No.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Passes five to two with Brown and Frazee opposed.
Barry, I'm going to read the next three because they're all held. So I don't see why we can't do those three at the same time since we've done, we usually do them all at the same time. Are we okay with that?
I'll refer to the clerk.
Nerk, Dana.
Sorry, I'm working with a mouse on my desk and a mouse on my laptop. I'm sorry, what was the question?
Can I just read all three into the record, the next three? Because they all are being held. They all have the same vote counts. And then we can do them all at the same, those three at the same time?
There, that would be fine.
Thank you. The next three items are AB 2020 dash 236, request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Wacom County and Ferneville School District to provide behavioral health services in the amount of $120,000. Pages 167 through 192 in your packet. Item AB 2020 dash 237, request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Wacom County and Bellingham School District, number 501, to provide behavioral health services in the amount of $138,000. Pages 193 through 218 in your packet. And AB 2020 dash 244, request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Wacom County and Mount Baker School District to provide behavioral health services in the amount of 108,000. Pages 219 through 243 in your packet. All three items were held in a committee with a two, one vote and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion to hold on items five, six and seven. Discussion. See none, please call the roll.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
No.
Kathy Kirchner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
No.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
That passes five to two with Brown and Frazee opposed.
Thank you. The next item is AB 2020 dash 261, request authorization for the county executive to enter into a lease agreement between Wacom County and the Boys and Girls Club of Wacom County for use and maintenance of the baseball fields on county property adjoining the Phillips 66 soccer fields, pages 244 through 358 in your packet. We ran out of time in committee. This has been forwarded to committee or council as a whole. I will move this for approval for discussion.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, discussion.
Is there a staff report by chance?
I can give you an update a little bit. This is a long-term lease agreement that's up for renewal in collaboration with Wacom County Parks, the Soccer Commission and the Boys and Girls Club. These are the baseball fields that are actually sit on Northwest Avenue, just south of the Planning Development Services Building. This is used by various youth groups, both for games as well as for practice. They do an excellent job of maintaining that area. They collaborate with the folks that maintain the soccer fields out there and it's been a real success and I would urge the council to approve this. It also allows, I will note in here, if the county needs the property for county purposes, there is an out in the lease here.
Other discussion?
Mike, is this, do we have separate lease agreements then, one for the soccer field and then one for this section?
That is correct.
And the soccer field is leased to a separate agency?
Yes, it used to be the Sports Commission. It's, it's Soccer and Youth Association.
Okay, is there a reason why it's not one that does it all?
We had asked that question. Actually, there was some discussion about the Boys and Girls Club merging. However, their board of directors wanted to keep them separate. I think it's pretty much to guarantee that they have the fields available when they need them.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ellenboss, did you have a, a item you wanted to just, something to just say about this motion?
No, my hand's still up from a few times ago. I'd probably speak in favor of it though.
Okay. Okay, see no more discussion? Oh, Mr. Bird, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just going to say to Kathy, I think she's the moderator for us. I think she can manually, yep, nevermind, she got it.
Okay, please call the roll.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Absolutely.
That passes unanimously.
All right. The next item on our agenda is AB 2020 dash 286, request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Wacom County and the Lummi Nation for the purpose of effectuating efficient law enforcement in the amount of $0. Pages 259 through 303 in your packet. That was also referred out of committee to the council as a whole, as due to lack of time. I will move for approval for conversation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Ellenboss, seconds, discussion. Sheriff Alfo, did you have anything you want us to know?
Yes, if I could. Currently Lummi tribal police officers do not have the power to arrest people who are not enrolled as members of the Lummi Nation or enrolled as members of another Ameri- Native American tribe on the reservation. The FBI investigates the most serious felonies that occur on the reservation, but Lummi is the first responder. They, they have experience with people involved in various forms of criminal activity who are non-trivial, such as domestic violence, other crimes of violence, property crime. And the agreement will give them a better means to address this issue by giving them arrest authority. If someone is arrested or cited who is non-trivial, the cases are required to be referred to the Wacom County Prosecuting Attorney and prosecuted in the district court or the Superior Court of Wacom County as appropriate. The proposed agreement is to effectuate Tribal Police Officers Act, Chapter 1092 of the RCW. This legislation was enacted in 2008, allows tribes to confer general peace officer authority and the power to arrest non-Indians on the reservation. We've extended that also in our agreement to include tribal trust lands as well as the reservation. There are certain conditions that have to be met. They have to submit insurance acceptable to the State Department of Enterprise Services. The affected officers have to have general state peace officer certification from the Criminal Justice Training Commission. The officers now normally go to a police academy operated by the Bureau of Indian Affairs in New Mexico to achieve their tribal requirements. And there is a process where they can go for two weeks to our state police academy and take what is known as an equivalency course and then they will be eligible for certification so long as all the other requirements for background investigation and psychological exams are met. There also is required by the statute that they have an agreement with the sheriff and the legislature wanted to apparently put a motivator in there if what is not reached. It requires what they call last chance arbitration, which of course was not necessary in this case. Last chance arbitration is both sides put in their best and final offer and the arbitrator has to pick one or the other. So we've been involved in this for many years and have offered this before, but the stars have lined up at this point where the tribe, tribal business council wants to proceed. The police chief and I have agreed to a number of operational protocols that relate to which agency will be dispatched. If a non-trivial person desires that the sheriff's office respond to an incident involving a non-trivial person, we will respond. In emergencies, there'll be dual responses and that just effectuates longstanding cooperation and coordination that exists. And also the agreement now formally recognizes our ability to respond to the reservation upon request of the tribal police to assist in emergencies that involve tribal members, which we do not normally have jurisdiction over. So we've been out there where officers have been shot at or been injured and they're calling for help on the radio. And we've always responded, but now we'll have some more protection that it's, it's agreed to by everyone. And the statute specifically states the authorities and responsibility of the sheriff remain the same. So we have co-jurisdiction on the reservation. Right now, the tribal police primarily focus on tribal members. We have no jurisdiction over tribal members. But this will allow us to work more closely together and of course, I recommend approval.
Hey, further discussion on this motion, Mr. Bird?
Sheriff, I'm kind of curious, the, how's it actually work in practice? I go out there and break into someone's car. Do they detain me and then call you or they just detain me and take my information and then they send it to, and let me go and they send it to the prosecutor or?
Well, currently, under the, the law, under the treaty, they can detain lawbreakers and then I think they use the word deliver them up to the civil authorities. So that's what they do if they apprehend a non-trivial person. But they'll be able to do their own investigations and, you know, we have a lot of non-trivial people living on the reservation. They have a lot of instances of domestic violence and this will be very helpful.
Thank you.
Executive Sadeau.
I just wanted to add that we have been working on this since I got into the office and prosecutor, county prosecutor Eric Ritchie has been discussing with them as well as Sheriff Alfo. And we were all in agreement, so did the Lummi Business Council. So we are going to organize a ceremony and which Lummi Business Council has asked to be at their council chambers sometime soon, whenever it is convenient to, to sign this, this historic agreement.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Kirchner.
Sheriff Alfo, so if tribal peace officer were to arrest a non-trivial member and wanted to press charges, does that go through the tribal court system? It looks like it possibly could? No? Okay.
No, it goes to either the Watkin County District Court or Superior Court if it's a felony. You know, at times we have cases out there, particularly in the case of murders, where the suspect is unknown. We don't know who did the crime initially. So we, we've worked that jointly with the tribal police and the FBI until we find out who the, what the, whether the, whether the, the person that committed the crime or is accused of committing the crime is tribal or non-trivial, then they decide which court it goes in. But as far as charging someone, if they're non-trivial, it will have to be charged in the state and county courts.
Could, could you recap again what the current situation is and what this will change? The current situation between the two agencies and what this will then, just recap it?
The current situation is that the tribal police have no jurisdiction or no authority to arrest a non-trivial member within the exterior bounds of the reservation. This would confer that authority upon them.
And at this time, your sheriff's department can arrest a tribal member on the reservation?
No, we cannot.
So we're just expanding their ability to arrest non-trivial members on their reservation?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the last question.
So I'm just trying to make sure I understand this. We're expanding the, the Lummi Tribe Peace Officers ability to arrest non-trivial members on their reservation.
That's correct.
Or tribal land. Okay.
That's correct.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Alfo, how does this change if a tribal police officer is in pursuit of a suspect? And that suspect exits tribal land? Does he still have the power of arrest and how does it change mutual aid?
They, they, they would have general peace officer authority in the state of Washington and would be able to pursue off the reservation.
Correct. And there's a change in mutual aid in any way?
Well, it more formalizes it where now that if they call for help in an emergency, one of their officers is in a dangerous situation. It recognizes that they're requesting for us to respond, so.
And I assume vice versa.
I'm sorry?
I assume vice versa.
Yes.
Yep.
Anything further? Okay, please call a roll.
Kathy Kirchner. Kathy Kirchner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
That passes seven, zero.
The next item on our agenda is AB 2020 dash 288, request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract between Wacom County and Lake Wacom Water and Sewer District to provide emergency management services in the amount of 100,000. Pages 304 through 312 in your packet. This also was referred to the council as a whole. As we ran out of time, I move for approval for discussion.
We have a second.
Second, if we didn't.
Bird moves. Donovan, seconds. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Next item on our agenda is AB two zero two zero dash two eight nine. Request authorization for the county executive to award bid number twenty dash twenty-two and enter into a subsequent contract between Waukesha County and Boss Maritime for the annual dry docking repair and maintenance of the Waukesha Chief Ferry in the amount of four hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-one thousand. It just went three thirteen through three fifteen in your packet. That was held or forwarded or referred from committee to the council as a whole. Due to lack of time, I will move for approval.
Second.
Byrd moves, Donovan seconds, discussion.
I think we got John there.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you, John.
Great. I would just like to point out as you as you contemplate this contract that that, you know, given the financial pressures on the on the ferry fund over the course of the last number of years as the Waukesha Chief has gotten older and and are shut down in service earlier this year due to COVID, which also of course had some had impact on revenues, that our ferry management team got together to think outside of the box on how we might be able to cut some costs this year and come up with a better plan for for managing our dry dock time. And between Rich Hudson, Special Master, Eric Schley Huber, our ER and R Fund Manager, and Elizabeth Kosa, our Public Works Assistant Director, they came up with a plan by which they could offset a portion of the of the dry dock time and and delay that until next year. It took some special approvals by the Coast Guard, which itself required us to spend a little bit of money and and put forward a, you know, a competent plan that the Coast Guard would would accept and authorize that had to do with some some repairs to the hull. And the long and the short of it is this was all quite successful after a ton of work for them to get organized around it. And the result is going to be a a deferral of some of that work to next year's dry dock so that we won't need to take the ship out of the water this year by two order savings of on the order of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So kudos to those folks for picking this up on their own and coming up with a with a viable solution that will allow us to be within our budget by the end of the year. And of course, we'll have to spend a little bit more next year, but there will be ultimately a a cost savings in this whole this whole rigmarole. So I I'm really proud of the work that they did and and the fact that they picked this up on their own inspiration and and found a solution to to our tightened budgets. So thank you for giving me the time to express that.
Questions for John or or other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Next item on our agenda is AB two zero two zero dash two seven six. Ordinance amending the twenty twenty Waukesha County Budget Request Number nine or Request Number fourteen the amount of one million eight hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars. It's pages one through twenty-five in your packet. That was passed in committee three zero and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion in front of us, discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
That passes six to one with Councilmember Ellenboss opposed.
Thank you. The next item is AB two zero two zero dash two seven seven. Or ordinance establishing the Silver Beach Creek Fund and establishing a project based budget for the Silver Beach Creek Stormwater Improvements Fund, pages twenty-six to thirty-one in your packet. That passed in committee three zero and I so move.
Discussion on the motion? Okay, please call the roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes six to one with Councilmember Ellenboss opposed.
The next item on our agenda is AB two zero two zero dash two nine zero. Request permission for the county council to authorize the county executive to award bid number twenty dash twenty-four and execute a construction contract with the low bidder. Williamson's Construction for the Twin View Levy Improvement Project in the amount of sixty thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents, including all taxes. Council acting as the Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors, pages thirty-two dash or through forty-five. Passing committee three zero, I so move. I'm starting to wonder if I might need glasses now, it's getting blurry.
You might. Discussion not on Tyler's eyes, but on the motion. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes six to one with Councilmember Ellenboss opposed.
Final item from finances, AB two zero two zero dash two nine eight. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Waukesha County and the cities of Blaine, Everson, Ferndale, Luksek, Linden, and Sumas for the purposes of supporting accorded use of the local CARES Act federal dollars cost sharing related to the COVID nineteen health crisis. Pages forty-six through sixty-four in packet. That was not, no, actually was taken in committee, it was forwarded to the council as a whole. Questions about dollar breakdown and the addendum via an email and how that would be allocated. And it looks like Schroders.
On vacation.
Somewhere on. They gave us an update. I'll move for approval.
Yeah, so Tyler?
Can we get a second for?
Point of order, point of order.
Yes.
I believe what was moved forward is an amended version of this.
I don't have that.
Yes, we made we made a motion was passed to allocate the three hundred and ninety-one thousands of reserves into the digital.
Correct, Councilmember Brown is correct. The, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion, we did not get a second, but on the amended version.
Second.
Okay, then throw it to you, Tyler, Mr. Vacation Man.
So Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive, thanks for having me tonight. Give a little background on the interlocal that's in front of you. There's been a number of different conversations over the last few months about CARES Act funding. This interlocal, the 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 body of it is very similar to the interlocal that was passed with the city of Bellingham in June. The addendum in this interlocal is also very consistent with the information that's provided to council the last couple of months and also in the budget supplemental, in which we're trying to be identifying different areas for CARES Act funding to be delivered out into the out into the community. Really, the the meat of this interlocal is to focus on the the grants and the different community dollars where we will be working with the small cities as well as the city of Bellingham to move forward with those community wide programs. As council knows, the Waukesha Restart, which is the business grants, has already been publicized and is on the street. And businesses can go to the Port of Bellingham's website to apply for up to fifteen thousand dollar grants for two point six million dollars of community wide CARES Act dollars. There's also the eight hundred thousand dollars for childcare operators. The other programs that we've been discussing over a couple of months is the Housing Assistance Program, which is seven hundred thousand dollars countywide to provide stable housing for those at sixty percent AMI. And and that would equal about thirty-five hundred dollars per household or no more than a two months rent or mortgage. There's also, and I wasn't present at the meeting this morning, and I apologize for that, some discussion with the digital infrastructure or schools and trying to provide for remote learning services in the interlocal that's provided, it had an allocation of five hundred thousand dollars where there's some discussions of increasing those funds. And I'm more than happy to have that conversation with with the council tonight. That's also in partnership with the Port of Bellingham, PUD, and Waukesha County supporting a million dollar USDA distant learning grant to be able to accomplish additional resources for teachers throughout all of the county school districts to get close to that one point seven million dollar need that's out there for the remote learning. There is been discussions about working with behavioral health organizations and the original allocation that Ann Deacon thought that would need to be provided is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There has been an increase to that. They think that there's a need for about six hundred thousand dollars, so we can talk to council about how that would play out. The idea would be to probably reduce some allocated funds for the homeless shelter because there are other grants that have been provided associated with that. And then there's the food security up to, I believe, countywide, working with the city of Bellingham, six hundred thousand dollars to support food distribution countywide. Additional details on the food security will be provided. We're still working with Mike Cohen and at the Bellingham Food Bank, who is partnering with Waukesha Community Foundation and the other countywide food banks on exactly how those dollars should be spent. And they'll be providing that back to council probably before the August fourth meeting, if not sooner. So it looks like my video might have went away. Let's see if I can turn it back on here. There we go. And so the interlocal itself is a framework for us to work with the small cities. They had indicated that they will likely not be able to use all of the CARES Act dollars that were provided to them. And so the 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 interlocal was a countywide agreement to try to get dollars into these programs. We will likely be doing sub recipient agreements after the council passes the the amended version or the or the version that's in front of them. All of the small cities have taken this to council. A number of them have already passed the version that's in front of you. And I have been working very closely with the city administration, city Bellingham administration, ensuring that they will be funding programs as it laid out in this document. In discussions with city of Bellingham, council knows that we have an addendum in the first one from Bellingham that was focused on the base camp for the Lighthouse Mission facility. That's because that specific project was moving quickly and we need to establish it. We likely, we don't need a similar agreement as this Bellingham because they will be utilizing their dollars themselves and and will be issuing those grants for the businesses and childcare. So there really doesn't need to be a specific agreement in place, but there absolutely is collaboration and cooperation as it's laid out in this in this in this agreement that's in front of council. So that's the background. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that council may have if if it if it comes up tonight.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. The other Tyler, Mr. Byrd?
Yeah, so I'm curious, they can't spend the money, so they're worried they can't spend it also. We're going to do this so we can help them essentially spend it. So the money will come to us and we'll allocate it to projects for spending?
Yeah, yeah, that's that's correct, Councilmember Byrd. I think the city of Linden and the city of Ferndale got about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That number is approximate. There's a and so they've looked at their own communities and seen what dollars they would need to spend for their essential government services or for other programs that they have. But the administrative oversight and kind of people power it takes to administer the business grants or to administer the childcare or to administer the housing is is really something that we didn't want to duplicate throughout our communities. We wanted to kind of house it either in Waukesha County or in the city of Bellingham, allow for the the smaller cities to participate by contributing. We will be working with businesses in Ferndale, in Bellingham, in Blaine, in Linden, and all of the cities to give the business grant out to.
Okay. Tyler, is there, I can't recall, did we specifically approve sending or the fifteen thousand dollar per business program as a council?
I would say that there, my understanding is there is general consensus of it. I provided the details and outline to it, but there wasn't like a specific motion, if that's your question, Councilmember Byrd.
It was. So let me ask you this then. The that total sum dollar amount would be over the forty thousand. So will that then come back to us for approval as a program?
The the contracts would be less than forty thousand dollars. And the idea would be that that would be administered just under the less than forty thousand dollar contracts in place. I guess I was, I've been under the understanding for the last few months that the administrations provided the framework, provided the kind of allocations. I know that I specifically have provided all of the details to the programs that we have in place to council. Have heard a couple of comments and questions, have adapted to those, but have also kind of taken that as a general consensus of of moving forward because of the the very quick timeline associated with giving projects on the on the on the street.
Okay, so I would the I have a new context in my head from earlier today and the idea that we might be hanging out until we have a vaccine. And based on that vaccine data possibly being, you know, the earliest we've ever seen it being four years, this could be a very long period of time. And so with that context, I'm also looking at how we have gone through the process with the emergency budgeting items and approving contracts and deferred some of our our power through that emergency agreement. And to extend that for a year or possibly a four year period, I think, is not prudent of the council to do. And so at some point in time, I would say in the very near future, if not immediately, that needs to stop and we need to go back to operations as usual. The in this context specifically, I am very supportive of that program. But the question comes up that earlier today, we loosely said that these are the buckets that we agree to with these types of projects in mind. And executives who do made a good point about, well, at what point do we actually make a firm commitment and contract? We've already moved forward with the business program that's done, can we pull that money back? I don't think, once we make that firm commitment, that we can. But I also don't think that that firm commitment is paid until the council votes to make that firm commitment. So that's a tough position that we end up putting ourselves in. We're loosely saying, here's the bucketed areas that we're agreeing to and they're moving forward as if they were approved and contracted and they're done. The council hasn't actually approved. Actually.
Yeah, yeah, no. Yep, it it it's a it's a it's a good. Yep, it, it, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good point that you bring up, council member Bird. Um, we are anticipating to bring any contract that fits. You know, within the purchasing policies to greater than forty thousand dollars to council. Uh, August fourth will have a number of housing-related CARES Act programs on the council agenda. Uh, for those contracts to get signed. And so we are um, are, are no longer really. Um, working under the emergency purchasing protocols. Uh, there will have been very little contracts that we would be signing that's, you know, in a council authority. Uh, because I guess I would say that uh, a lot of things are still happening and we're still moving quickly. Uh, but it's not something that hasn't given the timeframe to go to council. Uh, and if there is a, a situation, uh, council will be notified about that and, and can, can participate in the conversation. But most of these CARES Act dollars and the contracts associated with them will come to council. I'm a little bit nervous about the timeframe between the August fifth meeting. And the September fourteenth meeting because council takes August off. Uh, so I, I think there will be some contracts that will maybe need to be moved forward. But we'll, we'll take that um into consideration when we get to that point. Uh, it's just, I wanted council to kind of understand that I am. Uh, the, a little concerned about that, but I, I think we'll be able to figure it out and, and still be able to provide contracts to council for, for, for agreement. But it is within this bucket. I mean, it, the, the framework is in place. And, and I can tell you that we are working very hard to accomplish this framework. Uh, and have tried to coordinate with council as best as we can for the last three months or since May. Uh, so I got two months uh with where the dollars are gonna go and, and where they can move. Um, I, I also would say that there's probably going to be some programs that the money may not get spent. Uh, you know, it just, there, there may not be an interest or it may just not figure out to where it goes. So. In that situation, I think coming back to council, having a good kind of budget discussion to say, okay, what are your other priorities? Which it sounds like you guys had that conversation this morning about maybe putting more money into distance, distance learning. Uh, we'll probably be doing that in September and in October and. We've already started to identify um, um, uh, where additional dollars could go to. Uh, like distance learning, if there are additional dollars. Now, I would suggest not going back and me updating the um, interlocal that we have in place. I would more suggest having the county talk about, uh, could we utilize the un- unallocated version? Uh, or the unallocated resources or the, the, you know, or can we utilize? Some of the essential government services uh allocation, which is two million. Uh, you know, we could make a decision that it's okay to take some of those dollars. Allocate it out into community businesses. It wouldn't impact or, or into whatever program. It wouldn't impact the small cities. Uh, it would just be that some of the county's operation. I wouldn't have those dollars to be able to utilize uh from now moving forward. Uh, but I think that that would be okay, uh, if council has, has an interest in doing that.
Okay, um, so I'll wrap it up real quick, but the. I'm uh, speaking personally, if something comes up while we're on break. I would say you give me one to two days notice and I'm more than happy to jump on a special meeting and, and address anything that you need. So I'm sure my fellow council members feel the same way. In regards to the business program, very supportive of that. But I do not see those fifteen thousand dollar individual contracts that fall under the forty. I see that as a three and a half million dollar. Budgeted program that needs to be specifically approved. Where I'm guessing the money's probably going to the port to allocate. And so if that was the case, okay, we're allocating ourselves. That's fine. The, the joint total program, I, that definitely, in my opinion, doesn't fall under the forty thousand dollar limit. So I, I would like to see that come back to us for, for approval.
Councilmember Donovan.
I learned how to do the little hand thing. Um, so I, I want to make sure we've been moving forward this. But um, a- and I appreciate the complexities of interlocals. So this is maybe fair Mr. Schroder. We have now amended this by taking the, for the motion is to. Take the reserves, the three hundred and ninety-one thousand and move that to the distance learning thing. Or, I'm sorry, just some red ten. Or, or do we have to go back? To each jurisdiction now with that change? Um. And actually, and I know, so that's out there. And I, I, we'll just leave, I'll leave it at that for now.
Uh, yeah, so uh, I talked with Karen Frakes a little bit today, so I'm sure Karen might be able to provide some perspective. Uh, with that amended change, we would have to go back to the cities and, and talk with them to have them update it. Um, I also think the council could accomplish that same thing. Uh, by giving direction to the county administration uh to allocate that three hundred and ninety-one thousand. Towards whatever program you want it to be allocated to. And you'll see uh the contracts be administered with that. And we wouldn't actually have to change the interlocal.
Interlocal, yes.
Uh, in, in, as, as I look at it. But Karen, do you have more to provide if, if you do?
No, I think you stated it well. If we change this agreement in any way, including the addendum. There is no agreement because the other jurisdictions are getting approval for the interlocal, how it currently is. So everybody would have to go back to their legislative authority and get new approval with a new addendum.
Okay, so an easier way would be. Just to do something separately, since the three ninety-one is only in our column, I'm looking at the addendum.
Yep.
Um.
Uh, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I would support that.
Executive salute.
I just wanted to add one more thing, which I did state earlier also. That when we talk about next four years or anything, it is not related to what decisions we are making today. Because this is a, a very uh, uh, scripted uh, 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 contract money we got from the. Uh, uh, Commerce Department. It had a lot of strings on it. It has its expiry date on it. If we can keep discussing about it. And we have left only one month to actually use those funds. We will leave a lot of money on the table and state's gonna take it. Because what state's gonna do, they have their lot of. Uh, potholes to fill from COVID and they will gladly le- take all the money away. And, and I think with that kind of urgency in the administration. The frantic meetings we have been having with the cities, actually getting them to agree. That let's pool our dollars and work together, which they liked it. And actually, we said, we have more money than you have. And we, we will supplement your money for the businesses, for the housing. For, for all other uh food security, human services. That we already have the infrastructure rather than you creating it and we will actually be adding more money from our pocket to them. And I think that's why they, they agreed to, to have an interlocal. Now. Like fine tuning, I agree, fine tuning is important. But fine tuning, like I said many times, perfect is enemy of good. If we want to for perfection, we're gonna lose the good as well and never reach perfection. So, so that's why my appeal is, is that please look at it. We want to be totally transparent. There is nothing that we will not come back to you. With, or you cannot recall us, hey, where did this money go? Where did you spend? What things you do with it? That's not a question. If that's a question in your mind, please, we want to assure you. That according to these buckets, which we took a month and a half to even come up with that. This is not arbitrary that we said, let's throw this numbers in, this numbers in. There was a lot of discussion went on with the local nonprofit, within our department, with the cities. And they looked at it, all the mayors have looked at it probably for four to five weeks. These buckets. And they said, yes, go get the approval from your council. So we are proceeding with that understanding and confidence that in general. Council is in agreement with these buckets and everything. Now, if you want to change a few things here and there. We will work with you or whenever we spend this money, we'll come back to you. I just wanted to assure you that.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, so just to, I just want to get a couple of clarity. So. Um, the business grant contracts of fifteen thousand a piece maximum. But because they're collectively over forty thousand, they're gonna come back to us for individual approval. Is that correct?
Hmm, hmm, that's not my understanding. So I think that was council member Bird's request.
And that's not practical.
No, but, but who?
Councilmember?
Well, uh, no, I'd like, I'd like, if I can finish with a question. So who gets to approve it then if it's not the council?
There is criteria in the business grant uh that has been sent out. Uh, and there are teams in the administration that will be reviewing uh the hundreds. Of business grant application that we get based off of that criteria. The same criteria that I, I had sent to the council uh about a month ago. And so the administration will be reviewing those applications and uh scoring them. Uh, there's the city of Bellingham, uh, in- individuals from Wacom County, individuals from the Port of Bellingham. Uh, individuals from Ferndale and Blaine uh that will all work together to, to. Score those uh contracts and issue them consistent with the criteria.
Yeah, but I, I'm, I'm not sure that from reading the charter, I'm not, I'm not saying I disagree with the process. As much as I'm not sure that the charter allows for the process.
I'm, I'm more than happy to have Karen Frakes uh look into it and provide some background to council. And, and I'll go with however, uh, there is a, a indication from the purchasing power, powers. But uh, we've never looked at uh individual contracts to individual businesses just because they were in a larger program. To be a cumulative purchasing policy amount. It's always been specific to the contract that's in place. So the contract that we would sign is fifteen thousand dollars, which is less than the forty thousand dollar uh threshold.
Well, given this is a very unique situation, it probably is a good idea to check. To check that the legal authority is in fact what we think it is.
That's great. I'm more than happy to work with Karen on that. And, and Chris Quinn.
And then the other thing I want to say is, uh, I, I had a discussion with you before on this and, and I know you're supportive, but. With all the people that are recipients of these funds. We, we, all the, all the buckets is, I just want to make sure that we ask them to ask for more. Than, than they've been allocated because some of them are not going to be able to use it. And we, we want a box full of invoices that we can pay on October thirtieth when we run it. If we find we've got extra money, right?
So. Yep, yep, very good point.
Are you guys authorizing us to do that?
Well, I mean.
Bucket full of noises.
I mean. So tell me, most embarrassing thing is we give them a million dollars back because we couldn't spend it.
I know. Would, that's what bothers me more than anything for last three weeks, me and Tyler. That's our, our biggest concern has been. Don't leave money on the table.
Councilmember Donovan.
I'd say give it back to the taxpayers. Um. Well, it's federal money that's going through the state then, but um, the, the uh process here, so.
All the, Ben just printed it then?
Yeah.
They didn't get it somewhere?
I think I was recognized to speak. Are we good Ben? Okay, um, so back to, we, so the motion is. There was a recommendation that we have in the three hundred and ninety-one five, three hundred and nine, one thousand five hundred. Uh, would be amended to go from the reserves to the, the uh distance learning stuff. So I think what I'm hearing, we would be more efficient um and, and moving this along would be. To dispose of that motion, pass this as it is recommended and then. Come back with a directive to the executive to take the three hundred and ninety-one thousand. And put it where we want it, rather than trying to do that as an amendment to the interlocal. And the way we get there. Is by dealing with the motion that we have on the table and hopefully. Voting that down and then um. Voting to approve this interlocal and then coming back to that three hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars and putting it where we were trying to put it this afternoon.
I can withdraw my motion. Let you do it.
I can't, can you actually? It, it became out of the committee, so. It was a committee recommendation.
I think, I think we have to handle it as it came from the committee first. So is there any other discussion on the motion to approve the amended version of the interlocal agreement? Uh, Mr. Bird.
Thanks, um. I'm not so much interested in approving each individual fifteen thousand dollar business grant. As I see it as the entire program as would. Really is one packet, right? Here's everything. Here's all the, the loan terms we're doing. Here's the partners, everything in one packet, not included in anything else. But here's the program that we're budgeting for. And we're going to approve the X amount of dollars for that's gonna follow this. So that it's very clean and we know exactly what it is. In the past, it's, we, we continue to come back and say, hey, these are loose guidelines. But that's not a budget level authority to go spend the money without. That budget being approved, right? I mean, we've been very specific about it's loose bucket numbers that we want to be able to massage around. A supplemental budget request that you get three and a half million dollars and now anything under forty thousand dollars can be contracted. It was great with that in mind, let's look at what programs can be done. So. This would be now the program coming back and saying, we're gonna take three and a half million dollars. And it's going to the port and we're gonna break it up and we're gonna do X, Y, Z based on this criteria and everything's done, good to go. They're gonna do the scoring and then we'll manage internally contracting and approving those. So. I felt like that would, I should get that out there because it seemed like there might have been some confusion as far as that goes moving forward. I see the rest of all of this being exactly the same. I'm not saying, hey, listen, you get three and a half million dollars to go spend food, schools, housing and human services on anything. Or something that we've generally talked about. It's, that's a loose dollar amount. If there's a specific program, I would expect that that comes back to us overall. And to me, it's, it's in context or it would be very similar to saying, hey, listen, we need new printers at the county. They're gonna cost us forty thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars a printer. We need ten of them. But so that we don't go over the forty thousand dollar limit, we're gonna go out to ten different companies and buy them. But that would still be, because it's one item, it would still have to come before us, right? Even if you went to ten different vendors for ten thousand dollars each, because we were buying the same thing from all of them. And so I believe that there's provisions in place and laws in place to prevent that from occurring. And I think this falls into the exact same kind of. Um, framework and, and then, right? I do really want to be cognizant and conscious of the fact that I understand executive and Tyler that you. Have been working really hard to get this stuff done and that we're under a serious time constraint. We need to get businesses approved. We need to get these, uh, we need to get daycares approved and all these other companies so that they can start working on that. And get us the documentation back in time. And so again, I, I will tell you, if you want us to meet tomorrow or the next day, I'm there. But I, I do want that stuff, but I will sacrifice whatever time's necessary to make sure that you can get your, you get it done on time. Um, I also, so within that, I, I'd like to remove the references that they done them number one. And I know that means it's gonna go back to the cities. But I feel like this is specific. I don't want to be construed. I'd rather those programs come through to us individually for approval. With this as an understanding versus a, a firm framework of a document that, that we're working from.
Councilmember Donovan.
I'm trying to focus on the agenda anymore. I think Mr. Bird and Mr. Brown bring an important point about. Whether this, and it's, isn't my interesting is two point two six one million, not three point five million for the community-wise business grants. Because that three point four million also includes the childcare grants and some other city Bellingham money that. That isn't in the kind of right business grants. But um, but how that. Things under the forty thousand dollars is approved individually or not. I mean, that, that's something I think we need to resolve, but it's. Um, but as far as moving this motion forward, I, I would speak against amending the interlocal agreement. Um, and try to continue this discussion about. Should council be approving fifteen thousand dollar grants? Um, as individual grants or the presence of this community cumulative process, but I, but I think we can separate that up from the interlocal thing right now.
Any other discuss, uh, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, um, in the six years I've been on the council, I don't think I've ever. Previously been asked to approve a public expenditure without knowing who it's going to. And, and I have a problem with that. I have a problem with, with breaking that rule.
Mr. Kerschner?
I know we have a motion on the table, but um, after we dispose of that motion, I'd like to make a motion that all the expenditures from the CARES Act dollars do come in front of the council for approval. And if you want to put a list of businesses that are getting fifteen thousand dollars, that's fine. But I, I agree that I'm not comfortable just um, signing off on, you know, twelve point nine million dollars to go be spent and then find out where it was spent after the fact.
Mr. Schroder, I saw you trying to weigh in there.
No, I, I, I think I'll leave it. Uh, we can have additional conversations in the future about it.
Okay, Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, I get, I get what Mr. Brown's saying. Um, this is a weird situation, but we do, you know, if we approve a rental assistance program, we don't approve each tenant who's getting the rent money. We've got childcare grants that are part of this three point four million dollars. And I, I don't know exactly which providers are going to get those. So I hear what you're saying, but I mean, but I think we, we do approve programs. And it maybe it's, you know, what's that threshold, but we've, we approve programs. We don't necessarily know who the beneficiaries are going to be. So it's, it's kind of like, how much is this an administrative or legislative thing? And, and I think it's a really important question. But I, but I still think we could move it in a local forward.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, it, it is an interesting question. They, I, I think the threshold difference for me is if we're providing, if we're doing a program that provides services that have no commercial value, you can't trade them for anything else. Right? If I give someone mental health services, he can't trade those services for something else. If I, if I give a person's assistance with TB or, you know, WIC or whatever the case would be, they're all direct personal services. But rental assistance, money going to a childcare operator, money going to a business is money. We, we, and once we give them, we're giving them a negotiable item and, and it's just a different threshold of responsibility in my mind. And I think that's the intent of the, of, of the charter and the system as a whole.
Yeah, and we, all those other programs, I look at them and say, hey, they're pretty well-rounded programs that have been presented to us where we understand the scoring mechanisms, how they will be chosen, how they will be backed over what what the terms are of the law and all those kind of things. So it's not, it's not even, it's not business per se or childcare per se. It's, I want to know exactly where the funding is going to and how those decisions are not necessarily the individuals that are getting the money at the end of the day. So if I understand how we're making the decisions, selecting them, then I feel comfortable with that we're selecting the right people. I need to understand what all of that is so that I feel comfortable that the money is going to the right people. And to the right things, he's going to have that impact. Right now, it does feel like that's a pretty big dollar kind of loose description, right? These things, so like you go to anything, we would have no idea at that point in time. I really, I don't feel comfortable with the addendum portion. And so I'm going to move that we remove those items from the agenda. I'm happy to read them out. Um, I would like, I approve this tonight without that. Um, with the concept that any programs that are individual, here's the framework for how they'll get done and those will come back individual programs for approval. Yeah, and everyone has seen the documents or they can use it as a guideline if they'd like. There's a question to use this up to this point in time about whether that is approval of a specific budget, you know, account, line item or contract versus is it a guideline and having it in here further potentially the further competition on this one. Remove it. Having our, our agreement between cities for how everything's going to work out in those steel item. That is my motion.
There's already a motion, there's already a motion that we have to, to clear first before we can entertain a new one. So I've, I've, the, the original motion is that we, uh, that came from committee is that we passed the interlocal with the amendment of the contingency funding to go to the digital infrastructure category. That's the motion that we have right now. So Tyler Schroder, you had your hand up a minute ago.
Good, 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 councilor chair. The, if that is on the table and we approved it, then I couldn't modify it. So my motion is to modify that amended version further.
Oh, you want to amend that amendment? Okay. Please restate that.
Great. I move that we amend the amended version to remove the final whereas, where, which reads whereas the parties currently seek to establish a cost sharing agreement for the CARES Act relief funding as further articulated in addendum number one to this agreement. As well as removing on page three of the agreement, the first line which reads the terms of this joint action item and the related cost sharing are set forth in addendum number one, which is attached here to and incorporated into this agreement. As well as under paragraph two on page three, the final line which reads the parties agree to establish and maintain appropriate budget spending thresholds to satisfy funding commitments set forth in addendum number one, as well as the final addendum in this entire day.
We have a second.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, it's been seconded, discussion. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Carol Frazee?
No.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
No.
Barry Buchanan?
No.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
There.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That motion fails uh, three to four with uh, Buchanan, Brown, Donovan and Frazee opposed. We're back to our original uh, motion of the amended interlocal agreement. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I just want, I just want to bring people's attention to the issue of the gift of public funds as it is under the Washington State Constitution. The attorney general did provide some guidance related to COVID. And um, there's a memo and if you look at the M S, M R, M R S C website, it goes into that. I'll send you guys a link to it, but it says, the memo concludes that with sufficient safeguards in place, grants are likely permissible if the local government can establish a clear nexus between the programs and either protecting the local economy or promoting compliance with public health guidelines. And this is a reference to, the, the constitution allows financial to support, financial support for the indigent and the poor, but beyond that, it's prohibited. So again, I want to make sure that we're in compliance with the state constitution and the AG's guidelines because if we're not, we're going to have, we're going to have to reimburse the money back.
Tyler Schroder?
Oh yeah, Tyler again. Um, it, I, I'd be happy to bring the, the, the business grant guideline uh, that I provided council, uh, and the contract uh, that we've developed between the city of Bellingham and Waukesha County's legal staff uh, that it would be utilized for these business grants uh, back to council on August fourth uh, for you to review them and uh, provide approval of that framework for us to utilize it for the business grant uh, program. I, 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 I'd be happy. That's what I kind of hear that the request from, from council being, and I'd be happy to provide that information uh, for, for council on August fifth meeting.
Okay, any other uh, discussion on the motion to approve the interlocal agreement as amended to put the contingency money into digital infrastructure? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Kathy Kerschner?
No.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
No.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
No.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
No.
That fails uh, one to six. So now we are motionless. So Mr. Brown, or Mr. Donovan?
So I move to approve the interlocal as is in our packet and then pursue the three hundred, that's not, that'll be my motion, but then we pursue the three ninety one into the distance learning as a separate item.
Okay, do we have a second? Ms. Frazee seconds, discussion. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted an understanding from the, the county executive that if, if it proves, if it proves legally problematic for us to provide money to these private entities. Because the, the letter is very clear. It says, which may have incidental benefit on private citizens and entities. It's not a pri, not a primary, don't know, a primary gift to them. That if that is the case, then we will um, uh, we will not proceed with providing this money if it's going to put us in breach with our constitutional obligations.
Are you talking about the school districts?
No, I'm talking about the uh, grants to private businesses because the more I read this AG's opinion load, the more I'm concerned about whether it's actually legal for us to do so.
I don't have a ready-made answer. I need to discuss that, uh, that legal letter. And get some advice.
And all I'm asking is a commitment that you do that. And that if it turns out to be problematic, then we revisit this issue.
Oh, definitely. We don't want to put our county finances in jeopardy by doing something. It, it's easy to come back and change the motion and uh, rather than make a mistake.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, please call a roll on approval of the interlocal as presented in the packet.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Uh, Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
That passes five to two with Ellenboss and Bird opposed. Okay, it looks like we're moving now to uh, Public Works and Health Committee. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Kerschner.
You're muted. You, you're muted.
All right, sorry. I'd like to move that the council request from the administration author, that the administration request from the council authorization for expenditures related to the CARES Act funding um, prior to disbursement.
We have a second. Bird seconds, discussion.
Could you restate it? I didn't, I didn't hear the motion.
Um, I would like to motion or make a motion that the administration requests approval from the council for all CARES Act expenditures prior to disbursement.
Mr. Donovan?
Regardless of the amount?
Thank you, regardless of the amount.
Ms. Frazee?
Um, I I maybe, what is our forty thousand dollar limit? I guess my concern is October thirty first, we have to have this spend. And if we're going to do every little dollar, I could see the forty thousand dollar amount. Um, but my concern is it's not going to be spent. We're, I mean, we, we take a long time here and I want to give a little bit of trust to our government. Um, I just have a concern that it's just going to slow things down and we're going to have money on the table at the end.
Other discussion? Executive, so do you?
Yeah, what about the monies we have already spent? What about the commitments we have already made, which council is aware of? And what about if we have to pay somebody overtime? Uh, the, we have to pay employees overtime. I think there's lot more to this than simplistic. Uh, I, the, the, it is totally reasonable for council to ask for transparency if that's what the concern is. But having a carte blanche that that report everything before spending any money. I mean, we'll do that, I mean, you know, but we won't do anything or very little. It'll be, it'll, it'll be chastising us to do anything.
How about um, notice, notification of the council, notification to the council? I think what, I think what I'm saying here is that we, we approved, was it four, five million dollars at the beginning of this? It's a loan from E D I and then we had some, some extra money from the state. And um, we found out just because the topic came up that the um, isolation center that we rented for three months has been rented to the end year. Um, I don't think anybody would vote against that, but it seems like that kind of stuff should come to the council for a vote. That we should be involved in those kind of decisions. And so I think what I'm saying here is that this document was put together. Um, I've had some concerns about it. I don't see them being addressed. Um, I'm one person out of seven. And, and now we've got, we're getting ready to vote on this interlocal agreement and all this is going to go away. And we're not going to hear back from the administration about any of this unless we specifically ask and by then decisions are made, money is spent. Uh, so I'm, I'm asking for this so that we have a way to um, continue to do the job we're supposed to do, which is oversight of finances that the county administers. So if, if there's a, if there's a way to do it, I'd be happy to do that. Um, I would, I think a list of all the businesses that get the fifteen thousand dollar grant seems reasonable. I think a, a report about, you know, we, we're spending a hundred thousand on overtime, we're, you know, something like that would be reasonable. That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, but you know, we have provided every, uh, I thought almost every council meeting, we provided the money spent. Brad has been providing that list of all the money spent, wherever we spent. We have done, done that. I mean, if we have missed something, we, we don't mind providing that, but this is not our intention that, uh, that keep the council in the dark or don't, uh, don't share any information with them. And uh, so, but I understand what, what you are asking for.
Uh, Mr. Bird was next and then Mr. Brown?
Yeah, the, um, the, I would leave it the same that it comes to us, the we're a number of months into this, the extension of the Motel Six contract would have easily been over the forty thousand dollar limit as well as the ten percent increase of a contract limit that's in place. Yeah, and I don't recall hearing that actually until Kathy brought it up just now. Uh, maybe I missed that earlier when it was stated, but the, I know it didn't come back to us for approval and executive, I mean, this isn't anything to do with you or, or your administration. So I hope you can, you don't take it that way. executive, I mean, this isn't anything to do with you or or your administration, so I hope you can't, you don't take it that way. This is our job, it's what we were elected to do. It's it's the way our government was formed, it was checks and balances. And the sole purpose of us sitting here and having these conversations, being elected to these seats is to act as oversight and a- as a check and a balance to everything else that happens. And it's just like Barbara used to say, it's like you can trust, but you have to verify. And that's the job that we're in, is to verify upfront and to approve upfront and to agree with decisions upfront. So I'm not necessarily interested in getting into the nitty-gritty about who you buy every single mask from, but I would like to know how much we are budgeting for the next three months specifically that will be spent on masks and how much we're budgeting go to homeless shelters and how much we're budgeting and to have each one of those decisions made upfront before they happen. That's the way we do everything else. There's no longer a time-sensitive emergency in place with these things. Um and it's what we should be going back to. Like, I don't know how we either like, I don't know how legally we're doing anything else at this point, frankly, so.
You know, th- there is a time sensitivity and time uh with this, very sure that it is a strict time sensitive, the money disappears. That's one thing. The second thing is is that we must try to understand that there is a gray area between administration and legislation. I think that that's what I'm just asking for, that we should be cognizant of that when you cross that line and get into administration or us to get into legislation. I think that's where I see sometimes the discussion goes over that when council says we should approve everything. I think that it slows down the administration. It slows down uh every work, like, how could we be functional? Uh if 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 uh the, you know, we we don't have the ability to function. That's the only concern I have. Transparency, I have no concern about. But having it that there is a tie-down to every little thing. You know, the, you meet every two weeks, there are, uh you know, ten working days in between those. And those working days, eight hundred people are working eight hours a day and things go on, and somebody has to keep that things moving.
I understand what you're saying, and I hope that you understand that what I'm referring to is the process that we use for everything else, and so everything we do for every department through the history of our government locally, since the charter has been that we budget specific items, whether that's new hires for a department or department heads or new programs within those departments. Um printers, purchase of new vehicles, whatever it might be, and then contracted amounts over forty thousand dollars or ten percent increases, we also approve. I believe that we need to be doing that in this case as well.
So for that matter, if you approve a budget of two point six million dollars to business grants and and the criteria for the grants, is that not sufficient for the council?
That is what I said earlier, yes. And so if we approve that budget with all that information, then I would be okay with that, because I understand where the money, how it's being allocated and why. And then I trust based on all of that information that it would go to the right company as well. So and then that transparency is there, right? And so, but it it's gotta be the process that we use for everything else. We need to go back to that, is what I'm saying.
Sure.
Karen, did you have something to to?
Yeah, I I was, I think we've kind of gotten away from the original motion, but I just wanted to make sure that you don't try to legislate on the fly um to change the purchasing policies and the the threshold level for council review would require an ordinance, not just a a motion, so I just wanted to make sure you were cognizant of that.
Okay, thanks Karen. Mr. Brown?
Um I don't disagree with Ms. Franks, I think though the issue is here, it's the cumulative total exceeds forty thousand and so forth. That's that's why I don't think it's an overreach. Um uh executives to do, I I I respect the challenge you've got in your role about keeping the ball moving and the and the deadlines, uh and I, as Mr. Bird offered, I I will be available at any time necessary even through the summer to meet and do approvals as as necessary. But I'd also like to say, I don't think it is a gray area. At the end of the day, we are at the very least, as the council, we are the second signature on every check. Every check over forty thousand dollars. So, and that's what's required of us in in the charter and the county code, so I don't say there's a gra- gray area at all. Uh as far as the, as Ms. Kerschner's motion, and I don't know if she'll accept this as a friendly amendment, but I'm not, I'm not worried about the the five million to reimburse the county government for money it's already res- already spent. You know, we've already approved those expenditures, I don't have a problem with reimbursing them. I I don't have a a problem with money, frankly, going to any other government entity, whether it be um a local government or a school district or whatever the case may be. But when it comes to writing a check to a private entity, I absolutely am uncomfortable at doing so blindly. I I do, I I believe I'm obligated to my constituents to know who that money is going for and and whether I, I in good faith believe it is legitimate and meets the conditions of both the charter and the and the state constitution.
Mr. Donovan?
So I think we're touching on a stuff here that we we need some more uh information from our legal counsel and the and the executive, maybe from from the executive council about how these fifteen thousand dollar grants fit into our contract and purchasing policy. And and I don't think we're gonna resolve that right now, but but I I do, I want to follow up on something Mr. Bird was saying that, so yeah, the, was it through the emergency proclamation that we were able to extend the Byron Street uh that lease for longer and exceed the the normal forty thousand dollar ten percent thing, so that, you know, that's that's a question maybe to to the executive or to Karen. Um but I but I think, you know, we we need to I I agree, at some point, when do we get back to, it's a forty thousand dollar contract, it's ten percent increase that comes to council. That's one thing that I think maybe it overlaps the emergency proclamation, and then then the second thing is again, we need to get some legal advice on this, is is this block program with a bunch of fifteen thousand dollar grants, is that an administrative function or legislative function? And and that my ask is to get some work um legal analysis of that, then then I think we can get here. So there's two separate things, I guess, like was the contract extension for Byron Street because the emergency proclamation? And then how do we move forward and get some clarity on the uh what we're gonna do with this business grant then?
Mr. Bird?
Thanks. Um I'd like to get the same answers that that or I'd like to hear those answers to Councilor Donovan's questions too. We have an emergency proclamation. We have an emergency ordinance on Cherry Point. That expires every few months and we have to re-up it. It seems like an emergency proclamation wouldn't go on forever and ever and ever, and that it would also have a time constraint in which it would have to be re-upped by us or the executive um as well, and so I'm curious if that's the case, and and if so, what does that look like? Is it the same as an ordinance or something else? Uh one and two, I can't help but feel like there's some legal liability to us as council members if if we choose to overlook kind of doing if we don't do business like we always have, if we don't always, if we don't follow the process and the charter the way it's been laid out in the past. If you look at other situations with, say, nonprofits, and if you're on a board of a nonprofit and a nonprofit goes out of businesses and has debt, that comes back to you as the as the board member, because you were fiduciary, you have a fiduciary responsibility for that debt, right? The, you look at our own position here, and I know that the executive's position is also has a liability, if if there is a budget in which we don't have enough revenue that comes in and we're spending more, that he's personally liable for the difference, or she, so the, in that seat, and so there seems like there would be something similar in this case, if we're not doing the the job that we were elected to do and following the process that we were elected to to follow, then are we also gonna have some some kind of liability? And I I'd like to understand if that's the case and what that would look like. Could we be sued by community members at the end of the day for for the decisions that we're making right now? Um I think that's gonna be important for us to know. I also want to be really clear, like, the business thing I'm using as an example, because it it's a good example. Um but I I believe it applies to everything. Everything needs to go back to usual and everything that we're doing through the emergency agreement and even the unified command at this point, we need to be looking at what those budgets are, how much we're planning on spending, how we're allocating those funding in the long term, whether it's one month out, two months, three months, or the rest of the year, or the next four years. Uh we need to start treating that as its own department, if it's gonna continue. We need to see that information upfront and have an idea of what the plan is for for spending and at what point we may be incurring overtime and what our overtime reserve funds are gonna be for that. Or how the twenty percent reduction in in staff time um for furlough is is gonna impact that in that, the budget overall. Um so we, I think it's gotta go back to to that. I think you guys understand what I'm saying, so I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
I'd like to move to hold the motion until we can get a a a legal analysis and learn a little bit more about this instead of just kind of rambling like we are now.
Well, in light of what, in light of what Karen Frakes has uh said that this would need uh to be an ordinance, um I can withdraw my motion. Um but I, but I do want the administration to know that I think that, you know, there's a strong desire to have information about how this money is spent, so thank you.
Yes, Mr. Bird?
I'm gonna ask that that we set up a time at our next meeting specific to this, to get this this resolved and these questions answered across the board, and and then we formalize a process moving forward for how we'll be dealing with these things.
That's what I was gonna suggest as well, to put it on our our agenda for uh the fourth, or even next week, if we can get the information by then. So the motion's withdrawn, uh we're ready to move on. Mr. Brown, do you have something to add?
Sorry, did did, we had a motion on the floor to approve this, so that that's the one you're saying has been withdrawn?
Kathy withdrew her motion.
Okay, okay, Kathy withdrew her motion on that. So then, are we back to the main motion then? Is that right?
There was, that was a main motion.
Okay, I thought the main motion before that was to actually approve this.
We already did that. We did that.
Okay, all right. And then um I just have a question, the executive, what what other jurisdictions have already approved this as it stands today? What are, what other councils have approved this?
Maybe Tyler, you know?
Yeah, I can speak to that. I've heard from um Everson and Sumas, Burnell, and we've Linden and Blaine were approving it yesterday, but I've been on vacation slash furlough and I haven't heard from them.
Bellingham?
Uh Bellingham has approved the uh larger framework interlocal. Um well aware and their council has uh agreed to the framework, but it's not included in their uh interlocal. They are using it uh con- consistent with their funding allocation.
Okay, so they're not gonna be part of this agreement, what you're saying?
Now, this is an agreement between uh the Wacom County and the small cities, there's a separate agreement with Wacom County and the city of Bellingham.
All right, okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on uh uh anything related to the finance committee? Okay, we'll move on to uh Councilmember Frazee and Public Works and Health.
All right, um we had AB two zero two zero two nine six a resolution approving the Lake Wacom Water and Sewer District Comprehensive Sewer Plan twenty twenty update, and that passed three to zero in committee, and I so moved.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird? Tyler Bird? Tyler Bird? Todd Donovan?
Yes, just we go right back around for Tyler, but.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Back to Tyler Bird? Tyler Bird?
Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Bird uh out of the room.
You're muted, Barry.
Okay, that passes uh six to zero with Councilmember Bird out of the room. And now we're on to council appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Uh the first one is AB twenty twenty dash two eight one. It's appointment to the Wildlife Advisory Committee, member with.
Uh Barry?
Yes.
I believe Ben put in no on that, is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, you are correct. So it it was five to one with uh Councilmember Bird out of the room. Thank you.
Bird, point, point of order too, sorry. Can I, can I just confirm, did we vote on the addition of the three ninety-one? I'm sorry, I'm just lost where we ended up.
We voted against the three ninety-one?
No, but there was, there was a discussion about doing a separate motion.
We did not, we did not do a separate motion on the three ninety-one.
Okay.
So right.
So I'd like to make that motion.
We'll bring that back around when we get to uh other business.
Okay, that's fine.
Um anyway, this is AB twenty twenty dash two eighty-one, appointment to the Wildlife Advisory Committee, member with technical experience, and the applicant is Barry Wanger.
Move to a point.
We have a motion and a second to appoint, any discussion? Seeing none, pla- please call the roll.
Tyler Bird? Todd Donovan?
Yes, I just got back.
Yes for Tyler, yes for Todd.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes uh six to one with Mr. Ellenboss opposed. Next is uh AB twenty twenty dash two eighty-two, appointment to the Homeless Strategies Work Group. The position is the homeless advocate position, and the applicant is Marcus D. Stidham, who is a, would be a returning member. So I would entertain a motion.
So man?
Brown moves. Ms. Frazee seconds, discussion. Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, I support this, but didn't we just appoint him, or is my memory, was it a short cycle or something, or am I thinking of a different body?
What we did, we did two things, what, we added two new positions, uh some some new folks last meeting. And we also ex- uh voted to extend this term to a two-year rather than a one-year, but we didn't reappoint Marcus specifically, yeah. Any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yeah.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. That passes unanimously. Next is AB twenty twenty dash two eighty three, appointment to the Consolidated Drainage Improvement District One. Supervisor, position three, and the applicant is James Borna. I'd entertain a motion.
To appoint.
Right. I'll second Todd.
Okay, Todd moves and Tyler Bird seconds. Um, discussion. Seeing none, we will vote.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Uh, next is executive appointments to boards, commissions and committees, AB twenty twenty dash two eighty five. Request confirmation of county executives appointment of Alisa Ordat or Adat. To the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. A motion to confirm?
Move to confirm?
Frazee moves, Bird seconds, discussion. Okay, please call the roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Next, we have a four items for introduction this evening. Um, do we have a motion to introduce?
So, man?
Second.
Brown moves, Bird seconds. Um, discussion on these items? See, oh, Ms. Kirschner?
Uh, just a question, a process question. So we're going to introduce these items. Are they going to filter into their appropriate committees for two weeks from now? Is that what the process is, Dana?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes six to one with Councilmember Ellenboss opposed. Um, we'll go now to other items and Mr. Brown, uh, we will let you have the floor for your motion.
Uh, I'd like to uh move that we take the reserves, um, reserve amount in the. Uh, item we discussed in the CARES Act dollars, which was AB twenty twenty dash. Two nine, two nine eight. Uh, the three hundred ninety one thousand five hundred dollars and we move that into the allocation for digital or the um. Uh, what's it called?
Distance learning.
Distance learning, yeah.
I'll second.
Hey, Brown moves, Jonathan seconds, discussion. Ms. Frazee?
I didn't look at the numbers, but is that our complete reserves for the total number?
Yes.
Other discussion and questions? Oh, that was a tie. I want to go with, I'm going to go with uh Ms. Kirschner.
Ladies first.
I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm, I'm very comfortable supporting this. Because I think that there's a possibility that there will be money allocated in the other categories. That won't be spent and so I'm not thinking we're at the squeaky end of the wheel yet by allocating everything. Cause I, I do believe we'll have um areas that will not spend their allocation. And we may at the last minute be, you know, shuffling around trying to find ways to. Um, pro- you know, proactively spend that money before the end of October. So I'm comfortable supporting that.
Do you know?
Executive, so do you?
Yeah, I was going to say that uh we'll take under the same, same rule that this is just a pot of money. Five hundred thousand plus three ninety one. Uh, there is no fixed, we don't know yet how it will be spent. And where it will be spent and uh what will happen with if we get a million dollar grant from USDA. And uh, and and so, so we'll, we'll work through that. So it's being added to the same pot. It, so I just want everybody to understand it's not an approval of anything, it's just increasing one pot to the other pot.
Yeah, we'll, we'll abide by our own rules.
I just wanted to remind, I just wanted to remind.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
That passes six to one with Ellenboss opposed. Um, is there any other items of new business, uh, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'd just like to throw out a discussion about us being available on a predictable fashion once a week. To say two hours for the executive to get stuff approved. Um, between now and the end of the year if needed. Um, the one of the, one of the benefits of doing the Zoom is we could literally. I, I mean, I could go back and visit my family in Australia and I could still participate in a Zoom meeting. Um, if I did it for too long, you'd probably kick me off the council, but um, the point is, is that we can, we, we have the ability to participate. And given this is such an extensive community crisis, I think we need to be flexible.
I agree. Is that a motion?
My mo- my motion would be, and 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 I'm inviting these, the executive and. Uh, Mr. Schroeder to come back, but my motion would be that we have a standing availability, whether it's used or not, it doesn't have to be used. But a standing availability of, let's say, one o'clock every Tuesday for two hours until it's no longer needed.
I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I would second that.
Ms. Frazee?
We are going to be specific. I think that Ben ten thirty would better for him. If we're really specific about time being available.
Yeah, let's do that.
Ben, do you have a preference?
It all depends on if I'm days or nights.
Is, is anybody going to be uh out of pocket for any, like a camping, I might be out of. For a weekend, a camping trip, but I'm not sure yet.
I can't go anywhere.
Can't go anywhere.
And I may be camping one of those Tuesdays also.
Yeah, I just got back. Uh, I took my boys for the first backpacking trip ever that they've done. Hiked the top of uh Sock Mountain this weekend and we spent camping. We still had high speed wifi and FaceTime back to mom, so.
Really?
We have no excuse now.
I know Baker Lake doesn't have much connectivity, but.
So, okay, if we can leave it at one o'clock and the understanding is that the, the executive needs a quorum. To approve stuff, so if one or two of us is, is away unavoidably, then that doesn't, that doesn't slow him down.
But yeah, that'll all be fine, that'll work out.
I think Mr. Bird, I mean, Mr. Brown would prefer something closer to eight in the morning.
Mr. Donovan, Mr. Donovan needs to stay on mute.
Paul Raisi is seven AM, let's do it at seven.
Yeah. Now, I have a question and that would be for Dana as well. So how does this work uh approval? Uh, do we have to give two weeks notice, one week notice, one day notice? Like, uh, I don't want to get into this situation. Uh, so that I know ahead of time that how many days notice I have to give.
Sure.
Cause this cannot be an emergency situation. If it is a special meeting, I just wanted to know and everybody else to know, how would that work?
A special meeting can be scheduled as long as we have twenty four hours notice. And, but if you, if there's an ordinance that comes up that needs to be approved, that would have to be introduced at one meeting. And then two weeks would have to pass before it can be acted upon by the council.
Okay, but approvals are okay?
Yes. Um, one thing, one thing to keep in mind is at a special meeting of the council. The only items that can be acted on are the ones that are on the agenda, nothing else can be added. You can discuss other issues, but you cannot act on them. Only the items on the agenda.
Okay, further discussion on Mr. Brown's motion, uh, Mr. Bird, then Mr. Brown.
Maybe, maybe what we do is just formalize it and say, we're going to have a meeting every Tuesday at one o'clock unless it's canceled. And that way it's not a special meeting, it's on the agenda, it's good to go. Uh, and yeah, it gives us the flexibility we need.
That would still be considered a special meeting because it's outside the council's normal twenty two meetings that are set once a year.
We can make it work. I guarantee you, we can make it work.
There's no easy ways, Tyler.
Mr. Brown first.
Uh, uh, my rate of the charter is we have to have a minimum of twenty two meetings. Are you sure anything beyond that is, 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 even if it's noticed two weeks in advance?
That's correct. It still would be considered a special meeting because your regular meeting schedule is set once a year.
Ordinance.
Can we set, set the meeting schedule for the rest of the year by ordinance? Amendment.
Ms. Kirschner?
Um, I just wanted to bring up that this afternoon, we received an email from Dick Conboy. About concerns regarding Western and bringing students back this fall. And I did send an email to Erica, that Paul and um China Stone. Asking for their input and and advice um on that issue. Uh, I don't know if the council has any weight, uh, it might just be another letter to the people that do make those decisions. Um, but it, that's the kind of stuff I think that our Public Health Advisory Board could be very helpful to us on is. Looking at that kind of an issue and getting back to us with a recommendation on any actions that we should take. In light of the, the new normal that we were apprised of today. So I'm just giving a report about that.
Okay, well, let's vote on Mr. Brown's uh motion and then we'll.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we.
Don't worry about it, it's okay. Okay, so anything else on the, you know, setting up a, a, a Tuesday? Potential meeting schedule? Okay, please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yeah.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes six to one with Councilmember Ellenboss opposed. Any other, other business? Mr. Bird, you had your hand up a second ago?
Oh, I just wanted to, to. Add to Councilmember Kirschner's uh conversation. The, you know, I, I think it's an interesting point. And if what we're looking at right now is data that says that the virus is being spread by, by younger individuals. That aren't necessarily taking it seriously. And we understand that our, our health department is having a hard time getting these, these. This generation of individuals to listen to us and, and, and take those seriously. And so we're seeing a wire spreading those. I think that it is something that we need to strongly consider because. I don't see the value of them coming back to school in person for two months only to leave, you know, early. Before Thanksgiving, um, I take the rest of the year off. I mean, that seems like a fairly significant increase in cost. And if what we're talking about is, is this going on for a longer period of time and that this is a group that's, that's driving a problem for us. Um, then it's prudent to, to do what's necessarily for our local community. The other thing that, that I heard that, that is concerning me is that. A lot of the universities right now are seeing situations in which the fraternities or clubs are running contests. To see who is the first person to get sick. And they're all throwing money or items into a pot and whoever gets sick and tests positive first wins the pot. And. It's just crazy, right? The um. But apparently it's a, it's a pretty big problem. So. I just don't know that we want to bring that problem back and encourage it and facilitate it, what's going on. Um, I think, take care of your point.
Yeah, I mean. We just got an email that uh no need to wear masks, they don't work. I mean, there are all kinds of viewpoints from people. I tell you, it's so difficult to navigate. Everybody is a scientist, everybody has opinion and they think the rest of the world should conform to their opinion.
Mr. Brown?
You are muted.
I'm sorry, I was fulfilling your dreams. Um, yeah, I, you know. The email we got recently about um. You know, m- masks are a waste of time. What, what the author of that email failed to, to point out is that the, the reference. The professor that he refers to was fired from his university, discredited and, and paid three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fines. Or in a court case for, for libel. So I don't consider him a particularly relevant source. Um, the other thing too is that, what, wh- one of the reasons Australia has driven the. Um, the COVID thing down so dramatically, there's only one state in Australia now that's reporting cases. And unfortunately, it's the state I came from. But one of the things that they're doing is this is if people are breaking the rules, the fines. Uh, I think start at fifteen hundred dollars. And, and they caught a, a group of teenagers, um, I think it was thirty of them. Uh, there was an order for twenty pizzas and the cops noticed it and followed the order back and found this big, basically frat party going on. Find everybody fifteen hundred dollars. So I'd be really interested to hear from Ms. Frakes if she's got any view of what is our ability? To um, to create a, a, a series of fines for egregious behavior.
Mr. Donovan?
Red, didn't, there was just a big outbreak in, in public housing in Melbourne and they've shut the border between Victoria and New South Wales. Cause their whole great success story is now going in the toilet.
Yeah, this, this is the bad, this is, this is the embarrassing part of that story. It wasn't public housing. It was the quarantine facility for inbound international travelers.
That you were boasting about a little while ago. You called it a five star hotel, I think, a couple of weeks.
And thi- this is the thing is one of the security guards apparently started having a, a, a romantic relationship. With one of the inbound travelers. And that's the problem. And everybody's really upset about that.
But they can close the borders between two states.
Victorians are not welcome anywhere else in the country.
All right, anything else?
New York is doing to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, anything else for the good of the order?
No.
I have something. I'd just like to say, it's good to see all of you guys. This was a great meeting day to day.
See y'all tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's right, see y'all tomorrow.
Dana, Dana's trying to say something.
Dana, go ahead.
I wanted to clarify something Kathy asked about the introduction items, about them going to committee. Um, there are two of those items Kathy that go straight to public hearing in two weeks. So I just wanted to make sure that you were. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that.
Because one was like an appointment.
One is, well, the, the one that goes to public, the two that go to public hearing, one is the Verizon Wireless franchise and the other one is the installation of stop signs on certain county roads. Those, those will not be in committee in two weeks. Those will go straight to public hearing.
Does that, do we do that because if we're going to have a public hearing, we can't change it before the public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
So, okay, so we'll have a public hearing. After the public hearing, we could decide we want to refer this to committee for further action. Okay. All right. Thanks for explaining that, Dana. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, folks, see you tomorrow at 2:30 and we are adjourned.
Thank you.